Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim, and District 6.
Joanne Kogle, District 7.
Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
City Council meeting. We've got a lot of business to conduct and we will get to that momentarily, but we're gonna begin as we begin all of our meetings and that is by asking for God's blessing and presence. And I don't know how we've got this, we've got two pastors here tonight. I just saw Pastor, I'm on, I'll tell you what we're gonna do, y'all can either flip a coin, you can either flip a coin or we'll have two prayers. These days, we need all we can get. Pastor Crocker, if you'll come down and Pastor Stevens, if you'll stand by. Pastor Stevens? If you'll stand by, we want you to say a prayer too. I don't think there's a soul in here that couldn't stand here, two of them.
To God be the glory.
Thank you Pastor Crocker.
You know, we can always work things out, can't we?
Yes, sir.
Amen. Let us pray. My God, my God. How excellent is thy name? Above all the earth. And God, we just say thank you for this opportunity just to come and praise and worship you, even in the city council meeting. God, we come to lift up your holy name and to say thank you, Lord God, for life and life more abundantly. But if it had not been for the blood of Jesus, God, where would any of us be? So God, we're standing here right now, Father. Asking you, Lord God, to lead us and guide us. Give us the words to say, God. Even when our trust sometimes fails us, God. We can lean not to our own understanding, God, but we can trust you. So tonight, God, we're asking you right now to give us the words to say. Give us a mind, Lord God, to stay with you, God. And even when it's all said and done and when we think things are not going our way, God, you always got a way out of no way. And you have always shown us, Lord God, where to go and how to do it. So God, I just simply say thank you for the word. When it says, "Our Father, which art in heaven." Hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Forgive us this day, God. So this day, God, forgive us for anything, God, outside of your will. But God, lead us right now, God. Not into temptation, Father. Father, we just simply say thank you. Forgive us for all of our sins, seen and not seen. And God, I pray for this city council. I pray for the mayor. I pray for everyone, his staff. I pray for the decisions that we make. That the decisions are not personal, God. In the name of Jesus. And God, we simply say thank you for everything that you're doing. But mostly, God, we pray for the Freddie Blackman family. Amen. That you bring peace back into his house. And God, we know that you can. And I say this simple prayer. In the name of the one who came and died and the one who shall come again, Jesus the Christ, I pray. And every one of God's believers, say amen.
Amen.
Pastor Curtis Crocker, thank you. Pastor Matt Stevens, we thank you too, sir. Thank you for being here. Wow, that's the way to get the meeting started. And I will say that I hope all of you continue to keep in your hearts and in your prayers the people that have suffered greatly from the natural disasters through Mississippi and up even into Troopin, Meriwether County. We ask that you continue to pray for those that have lost their homes and even worse, many have lost their lives. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and remind you that the effectiveness of this council, to a great degree, depends on your participation in a very decorous way. So I would ask you to please conduct yourselves properly in this chambers. We do have a lot of business that we need to get done and we sincerely do not want to have to ask any of our security folks to help you remain respectful. So thank you in advance for your cooperation. All right. We have the minutes from the March 14 meeting. His council had an opportunity to review those. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any edits or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. Now we have a resolution, Counselor Tucker, for Dr. Judy Purnell. Dr. Purnell, welcome. Come to the podium.
Good day. It's a pleasure to be able to honor this amazing woman who has done amazing things in Columbus, in our state, and in this region. On this final Tuesday of Women's History Month. The resolution reads, whereas Dr. Judy Purnell was born on May 29, 1949, in Columbus, Georgia. And whereas Dr. Judy Purnell, a historian and educator with vast knowledge of the history of Columbus, Georgia, has dedicated her life to gathering information, teaching it, and recording it for future generations. And whereas she recalls visiting South Africa and the home of Nelson Mandela, where he was arrested. Her first, her visit was during the rep- repatriation period and she says it was like going back in time. And whereas Judy believes that there are still Nelson Mandelas in the world who believe it is possible for all people to be equal and unified. Mandela's legacy, she says, will always be the cry for freedom and equality. And whereas, as a professor at Columbus State University, she taught a course titled African and African-American culture. And when she reached the topic of great African leaders, Nelson Mandela was always part of the course. And whereas, because of efforts spearheaded by Dr. Judy Purnell, in February 2021, the Muskogee County School District posthumously bestowed the title of Superintendent on the late Mary Lee Hall Bussey, who served as Superintendent of Segregated Schools. The school district also commissioned a portrait painted by CSU alumnus Steve Tett to hang alongside other superintendents in the Muskogee County Public Education Center. And whereas, Dr. Purnell is a distinguished gentlewoman who has given inspiration to many through her high ideals, morals, and deep concern for her fellow citizens. She is a person of noble strengths with an impeccable reputation for integrity, intelligence, fairness, and kindness. And whereas, she possesses the vast wisdom that only comes through experience and the strength of character, which is achieved through overcoming the many challenges of life. And whereas Judy stands as a prime example of someone who lives a purpose-filled life. She makes this world a better place in which to live and it is only fitting and proper that she is appropriately honored. And whereas, during Women's History Month, we recognize and commend Dr. Judy Purnell on receiving the 2022 Lifetime Achievement Alumni Award from the Tuskegee University College of Arts and Sciences. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves the members of council to do hereby extend a heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Judy Purnell on her lifetime achievement. I move for its adoption.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please stand.
Thank you all very much. To the city of Columbus, it has been a lifelong journey for me, coming from segregation into integration, working hard to try to bridge cultural and racial gaps. It is a necessary requirement in meeting all of those things that were established in our U.S. Constitution. I want you all to know that I believe in the preamble. I believe that we, the people of the United States of America, in order to form a more perfect union and establish justice, we must be righteous in what we believe. We must believe that all people are endowed by their Creator with certain ineligible rights, which are among those: life, liberty, and a pursuit of justice. I hope that in the future, we as a people, a southern people, a people who have, we have to cross so many bridges to get where we are. I believe in this country. I believe in you. I believe that America can be America as it was designed to be. I am a strict constructionist. I believe in the U.S. Constitution. I believe that all of us should be respected as humans, that we should receive all of those privileges that this country has guaranteed. I thank the city of Columbus. I thank all of you. And if there's anything that I can do, even though I have reached the ripe old age, since you know the date of birth, you know that I'm 70 plus years of age. Now that I have reached my three score and 10, I have become a truth teller. So if by chance my services are needed by you, the mayor, city council, and others, it is my desire that we come together as one people because we are only human. Thank you very much. I want you all to know, this is my family.
Dr. Purnell, do you want to introduce?
And my nephew and everyone, thank you.
If you would come around, ma'am, we've got a copy of the resolution for you. All right. All right, next we go to the city attorney's agenda. Counsel, wait a minute, we've got Counselor House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take a moment to remind everybody that tomorrow is Vietnam Veterans Day. So if you run into a Vietnam veteran like your father, give him a special thanks for what they went through because they did go through a lot.
I will. Thank you. Yeah, we have any, if we have any veterans from the Vietnam War, would you stand and let us thank you a day early? Thank you, Counselor House. Outstanding. Mr. City Attorney.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We do have a short business agenda tonight. Got a zoning item we need to vote on at 2925 Manchester Expressway.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Are there any discussion related to this item? Hearing none, you can queue it and counselors, you can register your votes, please. All right.
One more.
Yeah, Counselor Crabbe is a yes. Or is it not registered?
Okay, that's approved. I think I saw Mr. Myers here earlier, but you are good to go now, Mr. Myers. The next item we've got, Mayor's First Reading of an Ordinance which would add a new Article 8 to Chapter 14. Limit coin-operated amusement machines to six machines per location, which is permitted by state law. If there are any questions around the table?
No, doesn't appear so.
Got a hand up, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's a public hearing. If you'd hit that button, Mr. Olson, so I can turn it on for you. Hit the microphone. Sorry. There, it's on, it's on.
Oh, is it on? Good evening. My name's Paul Olson. I live at 13830 Euphoria Lane. I'm pretty interested in this stuff because I think that we're having lots of problems at these gas stations and these convenience stores. It's called the Georgia Coin-Operated Amusement Park, Amusement Machines. I Googled it, so I kind of know what this thing's about. Believe it or not, Georgians spend $3 billion annually on them and Columbus being the second largest city, several hundred million dollars in my estimate. Probably the finance director would probably have a better handle on that because of the gross receipts that they should receive from all these businesses. It's been regulated from, by the state law since 2013. And mayor and city counselors, you're also county commissioners. And as county commissioners, in accordance with the Georgia Constitution and the official code of Georgia, are charged with the responsibility of providing a system of local government services designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of their citizens. And years ago, I remember the Columbus Police Department were actually raiding some of these establishments and based on multiple violations and infractions. And that stopped out of nowhere, so I don't know why. In the last few years, many of these gas stations and convenience stores have had killings and gun violence. It has been a systemic problem. And why did it take you, Mayor and City Council, so many years and acts of violence for you to address this problem? Because honestly, it has to, you know, I agree with you guys minimizing it, but it should have been a better oversight. You did close down that gas station across from Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church after all the violence. And what was so sad was that Mr. Patel, who was assassinated, actually making a multi-thousands of dollars deposited at Sanovis with basically a police precinct adjacent. So I don't know if they've ever caught the murderer, but that was just horrible. The convenience store on Floyd Road, there was a killing at a convenience store at Macon Road. And many of these convenience stores don't even have a doggone gas that they sell and yet they still stay open. And also the shooting on Milton Road with the children. And it just goes on and on and on. What I'm interested in, who owns the business license for these machines? And they have to have a business license. And since they're such a nuisance, you would think that you guys could shut them down as mayor and city council. Also, they have ATM machines at these places where they can get cash readily available to the gamblers on these premises. And if their establishment becomes a nuisance or law, under the same ordinance we're talking about, Section 14-261, our city charter license suspension of revocation penalties, you can suspend or revoke the license of any location or location operator if they sell alcohol to underage minors. And just last week alone, Chief Blackman, basically you saw on the news, he basically arrested five operators that were basically, you know, in violation of selling to underage minors. And I'm asking you, Mayor and City Council, what action did you take towards this? You know, towards these five establishments? And hopefully you take action because as, not just city counselors, but county commissioners, you're required by law to take action. No, and it also says, "No location owner, operator may derive more than 50% of monthly gross retail receipts." And this is in your ordinance. I would like to think most of these convenience stores, minus the gas pumps, would not even meet this criteria. So what I'm saying to you, ladies and gentlemen, and City Council, Mayor, is that when you see these food marts or convenience stores, there's no gas pumps, as many people that come in and out of there and the transactions and the processing fees and just, I mean, for $300 million, and that's just a guesstimation, and I'm pretty good at guesstimating with my math, right? And then as many as you see around town, there's lots of money going out and you've got to understand that 10% of that goes to the Georgia Education System for the Hope Scholarship. And since there's so many cash transactions, and you've got to understand that I had a farm out in Missouri. And I read in the newspaper, in Yahoo, and you can Google it yourself, that Missouri is going after all these convenience stores and these, because basically they call it racketeering. And racketeering is basically having a business as a front and doing illegal gambling. And since I was out in Missouri, I went into the VFW and they had those machines in there. And if there was $300 and they couldn't give them $300 in cash, they'd, under the table, give them $150. And, you know, because of set of gifts and all this other stuff that went on. So that, they got caught. So if they're doing it in Missouri, more than likely, they're probably doing it here too. Otherwise, with the illegal gambling, it brings crime and brings gangs. And for somebody to carry that much money and be assassinated, you know there's lots of cash because gas, I mean, I have a business. Most transactions, I mean, 90% of it is credit cards, okay? Mayor Henderson, you are also, as a public safety director, responsible for directives to Chief Blackman to carry out. City Council, you're responsible for the funding of the police department. And in this process, there should be undercover policemen and so on and so forth. And if either you do not do your due diligence in providing that guidance and financial support, then you are guilty of incompetence, non-feasance, and misfeasance in accordance with the city charter and you can be recalled. Disregard for our public safety, because, I mean, it's taken years for you guys to basically say, hey, we have a problem here, we're gonna address it. So where's the ramifications and repercussions and the reprimand directed towards you? You know, you're wanting to direct that towards another individual. And on a personal basis, and I'll leave you with this, a directive is like this. Remember Skip, when I called you when the COVID was going on and you had said, put out a mandate for the police to stop people if they didn't have a purpose to go somewhere? And I called you up and I said, "Have you lost your mind, Skip?" I said, "If you don't want a second term, buddy," I said, "you need to stop that mandate." He goes, "Well, I've already put it out there, Paul." And I said, "Well, you need to go back and do a retraction." And you listened to me and you did a retraction. So that's a directive. And so what I'm saying to you is that Chief Blackman, he's handicapped in so many aspects because if he's underfunded and the money is not being utilized, such as the Olas and 226, Resolution 226-08, and we've got $20 million of that money in a bank account of Sanovis in escrow, when that should be being utilized for higher pay raises for not just the police department, but the sheriff's department and also all public safety, we're talking about firemen too. We're not just saying that. And these people need pay raises because they're out there endangering their lives. I'd hate to go to domestic disturbances like that. At least when I was in combat, I knew where the enemy was. They don't get that privilege when they go out there. So I tip my hat to them. I'm glad that you actually are addressing this situation as you are, but that's all I have to say. God bless you, okay?
Well, thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this issue? Looks like that's it.
We will bring this back in the April regular meeting for a vote. The next item up is housekeeping and personnel section of the Columbus Code has to do with promotions, demotions, and transfers pertaining to probationary employees and repealing conflicting provisions. Ms. Hollowell, HR Director, is here. We'll call her over and think she wants to hit some highlights of this proposal and we'll see if there are any questions.
No questions from council.
Go ahead, Ms. Hollowell.
Sure.
Ready to speak and then we'll see if council has any questions afterwards.
Good evening, everyone. Chapter 16B in the Columbus Codes are the codified personnel regulations. Article 3 relates to the pay plan and Article 7 relates to promotions, transfers, and demotions. Working with the Assistant City Attorney, we've been cleaning up this, these particular sections, doing some housecleaning, so that an old pay plan ordinance does not conflict with what council has adopted in the new pay plan. With the adoption of the new pay plan, council approved, has already approved, the Promotions and Demotions Ordinance. Today, I am requesting your approval of the Transfer Ordinance. With your approval, the Promotions, Demotions, and Transfer Ordinances will be in sync as they do go hand in hand and they tend to move together for administrative purposes. At a very, very high level here, I wanted to share just a little bit about the Transfer Ordinance that we're requesting your approval, specifically the Interdepartmental Transfer Ordinance. We have included in this update definitions for promotions, demotions, and transfers and specific to the internal department transfers. When an employee is transferring from one department to another department at a higher grade or higher pay grade, the employee advances six steps in their current grade and then they're slotted into the new grade or they're placed at step one of the new grade, whichever is higher. And this applies to public safety and general government. When an employee transfers from one general government department to another general government department and the pay grade is the same or lower, they will start at the entry level of that position, but may be given credit for their years of service with the city up to six steps in grade. When an employee transfers from one public safety department to another public safety department and the pay grade is the same or lower, the employee will start at entry level of the new position and they may be given credit for their years of service with the city up to six steps. The last small section, Section 16B, Section 8 pertains to the probationary period and it states that employees are not eligible to transfer or be promoted to another department until they have completed or satisfied their probationary period. And those are the highlights of that transfer ordinance that we are requesting that you approve.
All right. Got questions around the table?
Yeah, Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hollowell, currently, without this, without this resolution, what happens when someone moves from one department to another? How is that handled? How does this change what is currently happening in our promotions and transfers?
Sure. This particular section related to transfers was satisfied in the old ordinance, in the UGA pay plan. There was direction there in terms of how someone transferred from one department to another. However, because we have moved to a new pay plan and we've changed the Promotions and Demotions Ordinance, the transfer does not work any longer. It doesn't work. So that, that's why we need an updated or adjusted, we need something that clarifies how you actually transfer. Because it was more clear in the UGA pay plan, but because we changed the Promotions and Demotions Ordinance, the Transfer Ordinance doesn't work anymore. So we need to change it.
So if I were working in a general government department and I wanted to transfer to another general government department, tell me how this affects that?
In the new ordinance, if you are in a general government, the proposed ordinance, if you're in a general government department and you want to transfer to another general government department, it depends if it's a... If it's a pay grade higher than where you are, if it's a pay grade higher than your current grade, then you will move to that department, you will advance six steps in that department. If you are transferring and it's either the same pay grade or lower, you'll start, you'll transfer to that department, but you'll start at the entry level, step one. However, you will be given credit for your years of service up to six steps, depending on how many years of service you have with the city.
And if I were in a public safety department and transferred to another public safety department, same thing?
Very much similar, the same thing. If you are transferring from one public safety department to another public safety department and it is a promotion, meaning that it's a higher grade than where you're leaving, you will advance six steps. If you are transferring to another, from one public safety department to another and it is the same pay grade or lower, you start at entry level, but you're given credit for your years of service up to six steps.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Davis.
So how does the intergovernment transfer apply to a general government or public safety, which I'm just going to put that under general government, over to a constitutional officer's office or department? Does it apply to these same, the criteria that you're spelling out to us? Does it apply to them?
It does. The policies in the personnel regs does not distinguish between whether an office is a constitutional office or not. It applies across the board to all departments and offices.
So those policies, are they currently, do they currently apply now?
They do.
And I'll tell you, we've always been under the impression that the council, we approve budgets, okay? That's one of our primary responsibilities. But when it comes to a constitutional officer, we're really applying, approving a number that they give us, but we do not have any line items that we can manage or approve, which is different from general government or public safety that I would put under general government category. The constitutional officer can make adjustments within their budget. In other words, they are in complete control of managing that full number that we give them. And they are the sole responsible party in doing that. So if that policy applies today, I don't, I mean, I'm not under the understanding that that's what is happening from a control. Who controls the department makes the decisions.
I'll say this, I see the city manager wants to share too. I'll say this, what it sounds to me like, Councilor Davis, you're referring to a department's budget or an office's budget. And that's one thing, but the personnel rules and regulations are something different. And I'm not referring to how a constitutional officer or a department manages its budget. I'm specifically speaking to the personnel rules and regulations that apply across the board.
Okay. Mayor and Councilor Davis, to your question, of course, I think the HR Director has explained the law. When you approve ordinance, it becomes law. But we do know with constitutional officers, they often tell us that once you approve my budget, you can't tell me what to do with my budget. And so while that is true, and I've said to the HR Director, you know, I am not going to try and tell the constitutional officer that I'm going to tell them what the law is. And then if they choose to do something different, I've said to them, if I were to use an example, it would be if you've got a, if you've got a department with $3 million in salaries and wages and a constitutional officer chooses to do something different that's out of line with what the law says because I'm a constitutional officer, what I'm going to be looking at when your budget comes through is we approved you $3 million for salaries and wages. And if, because you didn't follow the law that we have, I couldn't tell you what to do. But if your salaries and wages come in now at $3,300,000, we're going to approve $3 million for you. And then constitutional officer has to decide what he or she is going to do about it. And so I don't know if that gets to your question, but we hold general government departments to the law. We cannot, if a constitutional officer chooses not to follow that, I mean, there's nothing we can do because you approved the budget. And you approve, and if they are not exceeding the bottom line this year because they're doing it, but if they come in with a new budget that creates an increase, then there's going to be a problem.
Well, I do understand it that way. And what I hear saying is that total amount, that number that's being used for, in this case, personnel.
Yes.
Okay, if it goes outside of that number that's being approved, then, you know, yes, it's considered over budget. But still, they have the flexibility and the freedom to make decisions. What I'm trying to get to actually is the policy itself, this change, and how it applies to the constitutional officer's office as far as the policy, the written letter of the law. And what I just heard is it applies to those offices as well as general government, it's total government, and it should be abided by. That's what I'm hearing. And I think Director Hollowell, I think you did a good job in explaining those different examples. I do, I do want to ask though, if you've got a transfer, an intergovernment transfer over, and they're taking a title that, maybe we classify at a lower level, but they're still coming over and they're being paid the same amount. Is that, is that how it happens? Or would their, would their pay be reduced if they were to do that under this policy?
It's possible that, yes, someone taking a position in a different department, their pay could be reduced. And that's what guides this. As I said, if someone was in a department for a long period of time, they may be further out on the pay scale. But they decide to take a position in another department that is a lower pay grade. The way this policy guides is that they typically, they're going to start at step one. However, based on their years of service, they can move further out on the pay scale up to six steps.
Well, you use the word could. If they came in and they took a responsibility or a job title that was less than the one they came from, but they're making the same amount. You're telling me that that's discretionary with the director in that department? And this policy would allow the flexibility that that person could still take a lower classified job and still make the same pay that they would be making currently in their position when they transfer?
The policy provides a guide, but there, yes, there can be discretion, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure of that. But, and you know, the thing that needs to be said here is with this new pay plan that we have implemented, there is another step, which is what we call the maintenance aspect of it. So I see how this helps in being able to control that because the goal is every year is to keep making those steps. And so people will know what they'll make the next year, more and more and more. And we've committed to try to make that happen in the future. As far as the salaries are one thing, but the maintenance of the plan is another. I'm just trying to, my questions kind of bob around that, how that works within the maintenance of the new pay plan. So I think you gave some good examples that helped me to understand it better.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any more questions around the table?
I'm sorry, Councilor Thomas is next.
Ms. Hollowell, have you, I assume that you have discussed this with our department heads. Do they see any, do they seem to have any concern about it? Or are they, do they think that it'll work? Do they think it'll give them the people that they need in their departments?
We floated this proposal of the transfer ordinance to department heads twice to receive feedback from them. So yes, I've received feedback. And some of the feedback that we received, we did make some adjustments to the proposal. I've received very positive feedback for those departments that had questions. I've interacted with them and responded to all of the questions that they have.
So generally, the department heads are okay with this change in the policy?
Well, yeah, let me just say, I think based on the initial correspondence that went out and the feedback that the HR Director received, my response to that would be yes. However, I think she did have one constitutional officer who expressed concerns about the transfer policy and noted that they are a constitutional officer. And I did talk to that constitutional officer personally and kind of explained in the scenario that I shared with Councilor Davis is what I shared with the constitutional officer. I'm not going to try and tell any constitutional officer what he or she can or cannot pay their employee. But what I'm going to be focused on is what this council approved in salaries and wages. And if, because, if that creates an issue in the next budget process, then it's going to be noted. And so, but if they don't exceed their bottom line and they can figure it out, do what you got to do.
Well, my concern is I don't want us to adopt a policy that's going to cause a big furore, if you will, or concern throughout, particularly general government as our people move from one, may move from one department to another. I want to make sure that our department heads know how this is supposed to work and are okay with it generally. And I know that there probably, there's always some little something that may be of concern. But generally, is this true, a true statement? Generally, our department heads are okay with this?
Yes, and again, I just want to be clear, even with the constitutional officer, they can do something, they can accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. But because you're going to have some people who will leave and they're tenured, and then you're going to hire some people who have no tenure, and there's going to be some savings there. And if you can make that work, you make it work. But I'm going to be looking at, if it's $3 million on your salaries and wages, it's $3 million. And so when you come back next year, you're making those decisions unless you, this council authorized, if you authorize a pay adjustment, then naturally salaries and wages will go up. But if there's no salary, no adjustment in pay that you award to employees, then your salary would be stagnant. And so you shouldn't be coming in with an increase in your salaries because you created this situation. So they just got to manage it, constitutional officers, they just got to manage it. And they have the flexibility.
Thank you.
Councilor Crabbe.
Thank you. When we were implementing this pay plan, weren't we talking about being able to raise it each year consistently, 1% to 3%? And so with your scenario there, then them presenting a budget a little bit higher than the current year, if they did it, they would do it within that 1% to 3% based on what they're giving, with the type of raises they're giving. Now, do the department heads give those raises? Or does human resources give those raises, those annual raises according to the pay plan?
You give those raises, it's approved.
Well, but they present, the department heads present it within the budget, correct?
Well, what will happen, when we bring this budget forward, the new budget end of this, of April, we'll propose to you, recommend to you, in the mayor's budget, a percentage increase of 1%, 2%, 3%. And whatever you approve, if you approve anything, it will apply to every employee in the government.
So it's, so we're not, I'll just use my husband, for example. You know, he works for Aflac. So the way he gets a raise there is every, every quarter, I think, he goes and he speaks to his director. And then twice a year, he speaks to two steps above him. And then based on their evaluation of him, then that's how, he can get the 1%, 2%, or 3% raise based on his evaluation. So, but am I understanding you that just across the board, no matter what, everybody's going to get the same raise every year?
Unless we go back, so we have performance evaluations, but there's no money attached to them. And so you could attach some money to it. In other words, there would be a cost of living allowance, which is typically what we bring you. Just a cost of living. We don't bring you a pay raise because we're government. And so we could bring you a 2% cost of living, 3% is what we propose in the budget. And then we ask you to allow for 3% to 5% in a pay-for-performance system. If we want to get to that, we've been there before. But we simply, over the years.
But that's not what this pay plan was based on. That was the UGA plan?
No, this was long before UGA.
Okay.
Yeah. So he, what you described is a pay-for-performance.
Okay. And we have nothing like that in the city government? So there's no incentive for any of our employees to go above and beyond?
Well, there is an incentive, you keep your job.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, I think that's all. I think that's all the questions. We got one more, Councilor Davis.
Mr. City Manager, I wanted to ask, I'm just going to put it out there straightforward. And I'd like you to address this because there is, sometimes you know how the rumor mill starts throughout government sometimes, and it's confused in what's being done. The actions being done at this table get confused. I have heard that what we're doing from a standpoint of transfers or intergovernment transfers within our government, that this might be a way to put up some kind of a wall or a barrier to keep that from happening. That is not what's happening here. I really would like you to comment on that because I think, not for my sake, but I think there's people that might want to hear that so we can make sure that there's no confusion and there's clarity on this. You follow me?
I do.
Okay.
Well, and that's why I asked to speak because I knew that's where you were going. And so, and I hope, I shared in what I said that there are no barriers. A constitutional officer can do whatever he or she wants to do in the transfer. The bottom line for me is that doesn't give you the right to just go and spend what you don't have. So do what you got to do, but be budget conscious and do it within your budget. That's all I'm saying to the constitutional officers.
Councilor Crabbe? All right, I think that's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hollowell.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hollowell. We'll bring this back for a vote at the regular meeting in April, Mayor. The only other item we have is a request for executive session on a matter of potential litigation and whenever the mayor sees fit to call that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, we'll go into the public agenda. Reminder that each speaker will have five minutes. And at the end of the five minutes, you'll have to take a seat. You start with stating your name and your address. And we ask that everybody be, it's going to be kind of hard to hear us if we don't, if we don't keep the noise down just a little bit. Be respectful of the folks that are speaking and afford them the same attentiveness and respect that you would, you would opt for if you were up there. So our first, we had Mr. Royce Morris, who has canceled. Next is Mr. Antonio Carter regarding public safety. Is Mr. Carter here? All right. We'll go down to Ms. Letitia Rice regarding the ARP grant questions and concerns. Welcome, ma'am. State your name and your address, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Letitia Rice and I'm representing on tonight my business, which is Georgia Training Center. I'm not only representing my business, but I'm also representing a woman-owned business, a veteran-owned business, and most importantly, a black-owned business. And so, I first of all, just thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And my concern is related to the ARP small business grant. I guess I could say backlog. Our business applied for the grant initially in February 2022. I think with the process, it was, I'm not sure if it was still a shortage of personnel to do the grants, and that was the 2021 initial grant that we applied for. I heard back later that year that I had applied for the 2021 and I needed to apply for the 2022. So I applied for the 2022. Right after that, we were approved. We've been approved since the end of December. And so I was told by the staff, after checking on it a few times, that the reason for the delay was staffing shortages in that department. And my concern is whether or not the money that has been allotted to small businesses and nonprofits will actually be able to help us because many businesses like my own have been struggling with day-to-day operations since COVID. And if it's my understanding, I believe that's what the money was allotted, allocated for, was for small businesses who have struggled during COVID. This money was allocated for that reason, but we're having a hard time obtaining it because of the staffing shortages, which is what I was told within the city. And what I would like to see is these offices receive some type of assistance with the grant applications because I would hate for small businesses, such as my own, to close after being approved. I've been approved, approved almost four or five months, but have not been funded. It has not been dispersed. And what I've been told is, the last time I was able to talk to someone, because I can't get an answer from anyone anymore, but the last time was there is a staffing shortage. And so while we appreciate the city setting aside funds for us, small businesses, people like myself, it would be of no assistance to us. We cannot receive the funding that we have been approved for, for at least the time, the most time that we need it most. And that's my concern.
Oh, Ms. Rice, thank you. And I know there have been a number of challenges with that, not the least of which is some money that was actually pulled back that we had been given from the state. And we are in the process of being able to continue dispersing those funds because we have, because of the work of our city manager staff. Ms. City Manager, you have-
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Rice, yeah. Let me just say that, of course, we have staffing shortages throughout this government, not just in public safety. We have them at Metra, we have them at Public Works, in every single department across the government. So we do have staffing shortages. So when they tell you that, that's accurate. But, and so, and I'm going to be very transparent and by no means intentionally throwing the state under the bus. But of course, we, our initial funding that we received, we received it directly from the federal government to Columbus, Georgia. And we did $4 million in allocation to small businesses and nonprofits in small grants. When we, when we had exhausted all of that $4 million in funding, we said to the people of Columbus, and some of you may have tried, and we said the porters are shut down and they're going to be shut down because, until we get some direction from the state of Georgia, because the second $4 million was being allocated to the city of Columbus from the state of Georgia. And so with that said, we had to submit our criteria, our rules, to the state of Georgia. And so we were not going to move on any of the ARP grants because we knew that if we did it before we got the rules and the rules can come back and we've done something that's not in the rules, then they're going to make us pay that money back to the state of Georgia, although we've given it to you. And so we waited and we submitted our rules to include we are going to award grants dating back to 2020. And so we submitted the rules and we sat on that $4 million until they approved our final rules. And once they approved our final rules, we started to approve the ARP small grants. And I think we approved something to the tune of close to $800,000. And then the state says, well, you're not following our rules. You're awarding grants that date back to 2020. Our rules say that it should be 2021, as far as you go back. And so they did not reimburse us or were not reimbursing us. And we said, well, no, we submitted our rules to you that says 2020 and we gave you every criteria that we were going to use and you approved it in writing. And they did. And so they says, but that was an oversight. We should not have approved dating back to 2020. It should have been 2021. And from my standpoint, whose problem is that? And so we had to stop and put a hold on ARP grants using state money until we got all this crazy figured out. And we were on a Zoom call with them, Mayor. You were on the call, I believe it was last Friday. And they said, they told us that, well, let us go back and talk to our superiors and we're going to see if we can work this out. And so then we heard back last week or a few days ago, we got it worked out. And so because our rules were signed off on using the 2020 date, the federal government allowed us to use the 2020 date, they said to us, you can proceed forward. And so with that said, we're now ready to proceed forward. But the taxpayers were on the hook if we had continued to administer and approve these loans or grants. And they are saying, no, that's, you're not complying with the rules. And we knew that we were complying with the rules we submitted and that they approved. I hope, I know that's long, but I wanted to be transparent and I wanted you to understand. And I know there are others out there.
And I knew I stand for others, not just myself. And so my question is, is it going to take another four to six months for us? I mean, how would we know? Because we're struggling as small businesses.
I understand, but I want you to understand that we could not go forward until we got, and I think just, what day was it? She said, they told us on the phone and we submitted and we were waiting for them to sign off on it. So as soon as they signed off on it, we were ready to rock and roll.
Okay, I pray we're still open, but thank you.
Say it again now? I didn't hear what you said.
I said, I pray that we're still open by that time.
Well, and I do too, but I want-
I thank you for the clarification of it.
Yeah, that's where we are.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Ms. Rice, can you get Ms. Rice's phone number and have somebody contact her and actually do a little further, you know, help? Because I do know that once we figure out what's going on, I actually had just met with Governor Kemp on February 27 and everything seemed to have been, you know, going in order and place for us to get these ARP dollars. It was nothing said in reference to this. And that's why not only you reached out to me, but other business owners too. And as we sat around that roundtable, it was nothing mentioned in reference to some of these holdups. So I'm just saying what occurred, but I'm just asking, can you get Ms. Rice's phone number?
We will.
And we can contact you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And we'll get her number. But I am sure, just to be clear, that's down in the department and the governor may not have known. Well, I just gave you the facts. I don't know what Governor Kemp knew or did not know.
All right, Counselor Kogle?
Since this is, since this is not the first business that's come up here looking for their funds that have been approved, is there a way to communicate with all of the businesses that have sent out the, that have grants? Because not everybody watches city council. And there's, there's a bunch of businesses out there that are struggling and are counting on that money to continue to be open. And it's not fair for us to not communicate with them and hold them in limbo.
Well, and I agree, and we need to communicate with them and-
What is, what is the best way to do that?
I'll, I'll talk to staff. They can send out an email blast.
Okay.
All right. Next, next is Mr. Wayne Hales, representing the NAACP regarding the strategic plan. Mr. Hales, state your name and your address, please, sir.
Good evening, Wayne Hales, President of the NAACP, 1705 Mazor Drive. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager. You know, when I moved to Columbus, Georgia 32 years ago, there were, there were some organizations that were being held, Leadership, Diversity and Morality, One Columbus, and most recently now there's a table talk with, I think it's the Chattahoochee Valley Foundation. These were opportunities for our diverse communities to come together and share our concerns and find ways to work out our differences. That is not happening here, okay? And I don't know, back then, we weren't the majority. And so I think most folks were really excited about making sure we came together and there were no problems in this community. Today, the demographic, the demographic makeup of our community of 206,000-plus residents, 48% are black, 38% white, 8% Hispanic. That means that 99,000 residents in this community are black, opposed to 78,000 whites. Four city council districts represent more than the majority of demographics are black, from 60% to 80%. That leaves two at-large councillors represent us citywide. And the demographics, again, 48% black, 38% white, and 8% Hispanic. Now, those numbers can change. I've heard it from anywhere, so somebody might say, well, that's not right. Well, the bottom line is blacks are still the majority in this community. Now, over the years, at-large councillors, and most recently as representatives of districts four and districts seven, you have visited our black churches, stood before our congregations, soliciting our votes with the promise of being our voice on city council. Yet here we are today with you making a decision for us, about one of us, without us. And that is not what you promised us, okay? And I'm speaking of Chief Freddie Blackman. Instead, you choose to take the words of 200 or so members of the Fraternal Order of Police in their bogus survey, a small group of disgruntled employees, a tenant report, and a handful of people from the Lake Bottom area, over 48% of the people you serve. All of this, instead of giving Chief of Police Blackman the opportunity to implement a strategic plan you asked him to present. And I'm saying, you know, you've gone in the back room and we understand that there were at least seven votes. I know you didn't take a vote, but there are at least seven people who they said would vote against Freddie Blackman and that would allow you to offer a service plan. Now, I'm not going to be long, but I will say this. Many in this room know me as one who loves old-school music. So in the words of Johnny Nash, Marvin Gaye, Aretha Franklin, Curtis Mayfield, and The Impressions, and Sam Cooke, we can see clearly now what's going on. Obvious as the majority demographic in this community, we still get no respect. So people get ready because starting with the local election in 2024, a change is going to come. Now, I have been told that I have been providing racist rhetoric and what, trying to overthrow city government with that racist rhetoric. Okay, with a local paper that's anonymous. So let me give them a headline for tomorrow. In the words of Sly and the Family Stone, "Thank you for letting me be myself again."
Next is Reverend Johnny Flakes III, representing Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church. And questions on the process as it relates to the position of the police chief. Welcome, Pastor. State your name and your address, please, sir.
Johnny Flakes III, representing Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church, 6798 Riverbrook Trace, Columbus, Georgia 319, 31, 3, 31904. Ms. Mayor, thank you so very much for allowing me to come and also City Manager and also our council persons, Mayor Pro Tem and also the city attorney. We are grateful to be here to speak on this behalf. I just want to ask the question, what criteria are you using to determine fairness? I've said and I've heard processes and also questions about policy. It just seems as though there's a slight amount of confusion among those who are supposed to be clearly representing their constituents and have been chosen to make sure they understand the processes and the policy. And yet, it seems as though there are some that are still in training shoes. What I'm saying is that the process that has been engaged in as it relates to Chief Blackman, the optic is it has been unfair. Whether you agree with that or not, the optic is, if you take a poll and ask anyone in this particular audience today whether the process that you say you've taken has been fair, my, my strong conviction is the majority of the people in here will say to you that they believe it's been unfair. I just want to offer, just in case that you are struggling with defining fairness or a, the elements of procedural fairness, if I can just share with you the four pillars of procedure- of procedural fairness. One is being fair in process. The Jensen Hughes report assessment that was intended to help look at areas in the police department, it was to be used only to look at how processes, policies could be improved upon or best practices can be used to mitigate whatever the crime or to provide suggestions and recommendations from experts that would come in and consult with the city of this size. They had the expertise. It was never intended to be taken and to be used as a part of a process to oust the Chief of Police. It's never intended. And yet, there are those who have taken that particular report, that assessment, and used it as a weapon against our chief. It's unfair. The second pillar is being transparent in actions. You gave an ultimatum, not the mayor. You gave an ultimatum that said that Chief Blackman was supposed to come here in thirty days to give a strategic report. And he did that. And yet, you went behind closed doors and you played partial politics based upon what was being heard. And a severance package was offered after you asked him to come and to submit a strategic plan that would take it forward and give him an opportunity to implement it. It was unfair. The optic is that it's been an unfair process. Now, if we want the country, we want the region, we want the local citizens to believe that we are a inclusive, we are a diverse community, then I'm saying to you, your actions moving forward will give the exact opposite of what we say we want. Be careful with what you're going to do after this council. Because if you're not careful, you're gonna have even more severe problems down the road. Thank you so very much for the opportunity.
All right, next is, uh, Michael Powell, representing Asbury United Methodist Church regarding the implementation of the Columbus Police Department Strategic Plan. Mr. Powell, start with your name and your address, please, sir.
Name is Reverend Mike Powell, representing Asbury United Methodist Church, twenty-three twelve Ellen Avenue. I want to say thanks to the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. Thank you for the opportunity to express myself. I guess redundancy is in order. Because I think the perceived notion is common. And that's no mistake. There was an assessment conducted by the Columbus Police Department ten years ago. And at that time, the department was under the leadership of Chief Ricky Boran and the city, under the leadership of Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. The twenty thirteen assessment done by a company called Management Partners listed twenty-three recommendations for improvements for the department in comparison to the Jensen Hughes assessment, with current Police Chief Freddie Blackman that lists seventy recommendations for the department. Now, months ago, we were told how Jensen Hughes said the department lacked officer retention, leadership, resources, technology, and a written strategic plan. Well, rewind to twenty twelve under the Management Partners assessment, which according to a W T B M source, was never made public during a city council meeting or to the taxpayers of Columbus. One of the recommendations about policy and crime analysis capability states, and I quote, "The Columbus Police Department has made a concerted effort to become an intelligent-based, intelligence-based policing agency. However, the department is limited by both insufficient technology and personnel who are not trained in effective police analysis." So on the issue of police retention, in twenty twelve, the department had a hundred and ninety-seven officers on the force. They were budgeted for four hundred and eighty-eight officers. Now compare that to the current assessment with Jensen Hughes. It states, quote, "Retention at the police department has been significantly, has been insignificant for several, significant for seven years, not just during this current administration." The report goes on to say that between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, two hundred and forty-one officers resigned from the department. Blackman, Chief Blackman has only been here since November twenty twenty. I say again, between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, two hundred and forty-one officers left the force. So it's fair to say that this situation didn't just start under Chief Blackman. In fact, some of the officers that felt slighted by the personnel choices Chief Blackman made in building his command staff have been passed over by the former chief as well, Chief Boran. So this is not a new problem. But what is new is how this current situation with Chief Blackman was handled by this council. On February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, this council publicly gave Chief Blackman thirty days to develop and present to them a strategic plan to fix the issues with the Columbus Police Department. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, we all witnessed Columbus Police Chief Freddie Blackman coming here articulately.
Can't hear.
I can't.
Well, you're taking up the gentleman's time. If you would, please watch your.
On March fourteenth, Columbus Police Chief. On March fourteenth, Columbus Police Chief Freddie Blackman presented his strategic plan very articulately for this, for the Department of the Columbus Police Department. Chief Blackman's presentation follows the publication of a third-party assessment of the Columbus Police Department conducted by private company Jensen, Jensen Hughes. And that report, as I stated earlier, listed seventy recommendations for the department ranging from leadership, gang strategy, department communication and transparency. Chief Blackman addressed this council and provided a forty-five-page strategic plan for the police department covering seven specific areas. Retention, recruitment, the Bureau of Investigations, Technology and Use of Data, Leadership Development, Career Development and Community Policing. Several council members gave thanks to the chief for completing the task, giving a detailed plan and answering their questions in response to the Jensen Hughes assessment. Councilpersons Judy Thomas, John House and Bruce Huff asked questions, which the chief answered. And it appeared to us satisfactorily. And the City Attorney remarked that some of the chief's initiatives that affected the budget would need actuarial analysis. But no one in that day, in that night, in that day, indicated that the chief's presentation was unacceptable or unworthy of implementation. So there was, there was an appearance of fairness and the chief had met all of the challenge. All of this was public. The optics were good and faith in the process was reestablished. Fairness reigned until it didn't. This council then went into executive session and undermined the entire process and the appearance of fairness. The result is this city is sitting on a powder keg and threatens to destroy confidence in its elected city leaders and each other. You gave the impression that the chief rose to the occasion. He would be given what you asked for. You covered together enough votes to oust him and offer a severance package as a Band-Aid for a tourniquet.
I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off, but I appreciate, you can have three more minutes at the end of the meeting if you still need them.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. If you didn't finish, yes, you can.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next is Ms. Teresa Alameen, representing Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding the strategic plan. Is Ms. Alameen here? Yes, she is. Yes, ma'am. We will wait.
Teresa Alameen, six-three, six-three, Flat Rock, Flat Rock Road. I'm officially in your district, Ms. Crap. I moved. First of all, I'd like to say, to the citizens and probably most of you, most people wouldn't know a strategic plan if it slapped them in the face. And employers who ask employees to do a job that they have not been trained to do are engaged in unfair employment practices. And what I want to say to the citizens, the first step in a strategic plan is doing a power analysis. And what I learned from meeting with Chief Blackman in this very room on March ninth, cause I knew him when he was first appointed major. And I'm gonna be quite honest, complete disclosure, when the mayor said he was gonna make him chief, I knew it was a bad move. See strategically, it made no sense because Chief Boran was never really trained as a leader to be chief. And Theresa, Mayor Theresa Tomlinson embarrassed him at every turn as Public Safety Director. She spoke for him all the time because she didn't think he was competent. Well, when I met with, see, the first thing everyone should know is they began constructing, uh, the chief's discharge on February fourteenth. Ms. Thomas made that clear. But she said, fix this. I want this fixed. They constructed his discharge on February fourteenth. And there was nothing he could do and nothing he could say on March fourteenth to change their mind. And what I want to know is Ms. Tucker, Mr. Huff, Mr. Barnes, when did you know and how much did you know? Because this is the thing. Now, please folks, don't run my time out. Mr. Fay, everywhere I come from, the attorney for employers would tell the employers, if you're gonna construct somebody's discharge, you don't want to publicly humiliate them for months and then ask them to take a severance package and not sue. When I saw that, when I saw that, I said, hallelujah. That's what the union, that's what the union organized would say under those circumstances. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, your initial offer? I said to Chief Blackman, two million. Two million. Two million. That should be his counteroffer so that he can heal and get over this public embarrassment for months. Cause you always plan to fire him. When I was here, even in my madness on February fourteenth, I said it out loud. I know when somebody's about to get fired. You started constructing his discharge when that, those people start putting together all that stuff. And I will say this, the first thing in a strategic plan are goals. When I looked at the strategic plan, recommendations are not goals. And I have said this to Chief Blackman. The way you do a strategic plan, I've been trained in strategic planning since nineteen ninety. Goals is the first step. Where do you want to be in three years? Where do you want to be? You, you mistreated him by not saying to him, where do you want to be in three years? And the way I do a three-year plan, short-term, midterm, final goals, that's a strategic plan. Where do you want to be in six months? Where do you want to be in eighteen months? Because that way you can measure your progress and you can make adjustments. You mistreated him because he was never trained to do what Mr. House knows and what lots of people in business, military and unions know. This is a textbook for strategic planning. I gave Chief Blackman one, I gave Assistant Chief Kennedy, I gave Assistant Chief Dentist Patrick, and I gave Deputy Chief Hastings one of these books. Because your biggest problem as an employer is you do not train employees to do the job you ask them to do. And that's why. And that's why he should sue you. If, if, by the way, if I was Chief Blackman, I would not have done, I hear you. I would not have done the interview with Rosalind Giles. I would go to the biggest bet.
Ms. Alameen, you need to take your seat, please, ma'am. Ms. Alameen, excuse me, ma'am. We've got to move on to the next individual. All right, next. All right, next is Ms. Elizabeth Garcia. Ms. Elizabeth Garcia. Ms. Garcia, are you here? I'm gonna ask you to please hold it down. Ms. Garcia is not here. We'll move on to Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding injustices with the process with the police chief. Mr. Broadwater, welcome, sir. State your name and your address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you turn it on? Coming, hang on. Your time hadn't started. There you go.
Come on, Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, Mr. Attorney and all in attendance. My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior. I live at three zero zero four Slippery Rock Court, Columbus, Georgia. And let me say this. Let me start off by saying this. You know, it's been reported that Chief Blackman had a rally. No. This is the organization of the rally, so that you know. You don't have to talk about it nowhere else. I made the application. And there will be another one on April eleventh. If I do not see this council produce democracy, I will do have another one in May if I do not see this council some type of democracy. Because I sat here along with others on February fourteenth and saw a crucifixion. Saw it, felt it, Colonel House. I felt so bad when I left these chambers. I had to go out to Fort Benin and I sat for four hours just watching kids jump off of the jump tower. I just felt bad. Because this is a country that I love. Fall, killed, walked in minefields, permanently, permanently injured for the rest of my life for this country. Cause I love it. And I also love Columbus. I love the people in Columbus. It's a great city. May thirty-first, nineteen seventy-one. Some of you were alive then. Am I right, sir? May thirty-first, nineteen seventy-one. If you don't know, Google it. Google it. You all have put us here. You all have put us in a bad situation. You have put these people in a bad situation. When I have a young man that I mentor come up to me and say, Mr. Broadwater, why is our city council firing Chief Blackman? He came to us and talked to us. He's a great man. And I have no explanation for him. I have no explanation for him. So this is what I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you all to do. You've made it bad for a whole lot of folks that, that, that's gonna come in these positions now and sit in leadership positions. But you've got to get some type of resolve back. You have to. You have to. You know, we have a crime rate that's going on, we have overdose. Three people in this city die from overdose from fentanyl. Nobody's even talking about it. We got gun violence. People, little kids walking up, shooting each other. And this is what we're doing? That hurts. That should hurt you. Because a dog on shoulder hurts me. All I ask you, City Council, make this right. Make it right. Now, I've always been taught that when you bring up a problem, you bring up a solution. Somebody said, two million? That ain't enough. I'm just being honest with you. Now, you just come up here with a script, with a, with a, with a, with a written statement. I didn't have it, David, because I wanted you to feel what I was going to say. I wanted you to feel it from my heart, councilman, my councilman, my councilman Gary. I want you to feel it. Y'all have got to write this or we are in trouble. Period. Period. I'm a nice guy. I'm a nice guy, I really am, I have a great heart. I believe in this city, I believe in the next generation. But what we have done right now, and maybe, maybe I, maybe I am to blame, someone got one minute. Because I didn't come and tell you on February 15th what you had done. But I did send you all an email. I did send everyone here an email, told you that was wrong. And you, you made it worse the next meeting. You made it worse the next meeting. When you, when you offer someone, or you tell someone to present you a strategic plan, and the very next day, you offer him a service package? Now, let's be real, that, that had been in effect for at least a month. Let's be real, you guys have to get this right now. You have to get this right. Well, are we in serious trouble? Thank you for your time.
Mr. Eric Finch, representing Noble, National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the Georgia Chapter Area Vice President. If you would sir, start with your name and your address and your time won't start until you complete that.
Good evening, my name is Eric Finch. I live at 166 Americas, Georgia. So good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protown, City Council, and City Manager, and all y'all great citizens of Columbus, Georgia. My name is Eric Finch and I'm the area representative of Georgia Noble. And what that mean is National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. I'm here to speak on behalf of Chief, of Columbus Police Chief Freddie Blackman, who is a member of our organization. Noble serves as the conscience of law enforcement by being committed to justice by action. Noble has over 60 chapters and represent over 3,000 members worldwide and represent executives and command level law enforcement officials from federal, state, county, municipal law enforcement, and criminal justice practitioners. Our mission to ensure equality in administration of justice and provision of public service to all communities and serve as the conscience of law enforcement being by, committed by justice by action. Over the past week, members of our organization from our national level, from our regional level, from our state level, and from our local level had the opportunity to review the strategic plan fiscal year 2023-26 informed by Genesis Hughes, which was presented to this governing body. Furthermore, we also reviewed an organizational assessment dated by October 2013 and no action was taken by the council at that time against the chief of police. We are totally aware of the issues which are happening here in Columbus, Georgia. Strategic plan was submitted to Mayor Henderson and we humbly asking that the plan which was presented by Chief Blackman and his staff be implemented before any decision be made concerning appointment of chief of police of the Columbus Police Department. Chief Blackman is highly qualified law enforcement executive, fully equipped to implement the plan. He has a bachelor's degree from Troy State University in criminal justice, a master's degree in human resources from Troy State University, and he's a graduate of the prestigious LPI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. Let's let it be known, law enforcement is experiencing a spike in violent crime throughout our nation, about 4%. Let it be, let it be known, law enforcement experiences shortage in hiring qualified police officers. And it's extremely challenging for Columbus Police Department due to being a national credit and state of credit with Stefan Steinert. I know that for a fact. For him to hire people, it's standards that what he has to go to, to apply. For instance, my agency, you're riddled with stuff that you have to go through before you can be hired onto that police department. So we asking you with that, Noble, so this is what we're offering here. Noble is willing to provide Chief Blackman and his staff with any technical support needed to make that strategic plan provided to the Mayor Henderson to implement it to the fullest of the best practice in law enforcement and to keep the citizens of Columbus, Georgia safe. So finally, Mayor Henderson, we're asking that you allow Chief Blackman to implement the plan. And we truly appreciate you and your council for allowing me to speak to you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Thank you, sir. All right, next is Ms. Nadine Moore regarding the severance package.
Good evening, this, I am Nadine Moore, 925 Charleston Avenue, Columbus, Georgia. First thing I want to say is I love y'all. And anybody who knows me know that I don't use the word racism. Because it's only one race, the human race, and it was created by God. I don't use the word white supremacy.
Ms. Moore, can you pull that microphone up just a little bit?
I don't use the word white supremacy. Because only God is supreme, not a white man. And anybody who know me, knows me, they call me sis. But those two things, I use bigot and crackers. Because that's just how I am. What I have seen is, I had my law man, a millionaire named Paul Olson, to give me this thing right here. It says that all minority and female candidates promoted to leadership position in the last few years for the CPD have been unqualified for those roles. We don't have any unqualified minorities in the Columbus Police Department. From the beginning, since I was seven years old, they've always had to have a degree. And they didn't put it down at first because they wouldn't have gotten hired. So what they had to do when they, when Carlisle wanted it, they went to Italy, run a longshore and all them, they went pulling out degrees from Fort Valley, all been to state everywhere. So they had to stay up in there. When I got back from having my last brain surgery, they told me that you had a Public Safety Advisory Commission to vote out the, the, the Marshes office. Don't you know that the Marshes office is a covenant between Midland and, and Musco County? Because they lost the vote during consolidation. Florida Hudgens took that to, and put the Marshes office inside of the Georgia thing to protect it. We had, we broke a sacred covenant when we got rid of that Marshes office and Florida Hudgens lost his race. Then I looked at how I was in the charter review commission and some way they was trying to, and they weaponized that charter, it ain't no good. And then I've been hearing things about y'all want to consolidate the police department and give it all to share. Put the National Guard on the street when you do that. So what, so what I said was if this is a sinister plot to get rid of the police chief, so y'all can say, well, we can just go with the Marshes office, let me tell you, I saw a tape. And in that tape, a friend of mine, it had one million hits on it, friends of mine sent it from Germany. And then, and I, and I like all of our law enforcement, I really do, I love them. But them Marshes on that tape were acting like, uh, them, uh, chair of department was acting like pure thugs on that tape. One of them told one of them, if I see you out there and need my help, I'm not going to even help you. The police were just standing up there, leadership, the team reflects leadership. So I don't know Black, I really don't. But his team on that tape reflected his leadership. And they were quiet, then one lady stood there and said, they won't even let us in the U V. The Musco County Jail belonged to us. And then we need four more to sales taxes bill a new one, I'm going to get out there and vote for it. So y'all need to tell everybody, the police can put them, his people inside the jail if they want, when he wanted to, and they shouldn't have to stand outside when they need to be. But I'm going to tell you this, I want him to get, to, to, to make y'all fire him. Because two, $200,000 ain't nothing. He got four boys at home. And he got a wife. And she need to make him sue y'all for everything. And don't be ringing no bell at me because I ain't no rat. Oh, what happened, I think Gleeney, I think y'all should have got Gleeney, Pops, and Gary, and John House together to settle this problem. Because, because Pops can settle anything. And, 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 uh, and, and we wouldn't be here today because it's a solution to this. Y'all didn't even ask us, y'all asked somebody else. We'd have helped y'all with this, we don't have to be here, we the greatest city in Columbus. And what y'all did is proving consolidation ain't, ain't working.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Get Pops in there, let him.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Mr. Olson states your name and your address, please.
Well, I, I am guilty of mowing your lawn for the last few years free.
That's.
Right Nadine? My name is Paul Olson, I live at 13830 Uptown Lane. I'm going to ask you, Mayor, how many adverse evaluation reports have you given Freddie Blackman? Zero? You have to answer me.
I don't have to answer you, I'm not going to talk about personnel issues.
I'm just telling you right now, if you've not done that, Freddie Blackman's going to have a field day with you guys. Because, no, hold on a second guys. Because of the pure fact that, you know, a consensus by the FOP, which don't work for him, and he, and, and is, it was contaminated ballot anyway. And then you've got anonymous business owners that don't even have the guts, don't have the guts to come up here. And, 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 uh, it's just, it, it makes me mad, it can be. But I'll tell you this, out of the city charter, right? Section 4336, appeal of dismissal by city officer. Any city officer, and that's Freddie Blackman, who is removed or dismissed or discharged, can come in front of you guys, the city council, and basically says clerk of council within 10 days from date such removal. And he needs to file a notice with the clerk of council and, and such affected city. So have the right to have a public hearing before the Columbus Council be, uh, within 20 days of the, from the date of filing such notice of appeal. So I'm telling Freddie, send that, send that appeal. Because now, you think it's bad now, it's going to get even worse. You know why? In the law terms, and you're a lawyer, and you're a lawyer, it's called discovery. And in that discovery, guess what happens, guys? He gets to go on you guys, and when you guys, when I asked you about, what did you do about those five gas stations? What, what kind of, and then this, and then the city charter is basically says that you're supposed to do something about people who are selling alcohol and they have these gambling machines in there, and you said nothing? Well, that's saying nothing, and it's on tape there, basically shows that you're not giving him any support. When you use the OLOS and you send it to the reserve, $20 million, so that Sanovis gets to, uh, uh, basically loan out 10 times, it's called fractional banking of $200 million? You're working for CBT, Sanovis guys, that's who your master is. Because if you want to address the crime wave, what you do is you take every bit of, that you have in power and you take all of your reserve money. And I told you before, we only have, we have 120 days in the reserve balance, that would only equate to 50. We still keep our credit rating, okay? So that itself, so I, I, I agree with these guys. And as far as, it was a total mockery. He gave, he, he had 30 days, he came up, gave a presentation, and, and it was a total mockery to him. Just imagine if you were the person doing that, and then you guys turn around, go in your little secret executive session. And I've, and I have, I have burnt you guys, hold on a second. I have burnt you before, and you guys had to come back with a mandatory class on that when Theresa Tomlinson, when you guys went for the pay raises for his executive and you didn't do it? Well, when you sign a sworn affidavit to go into executive session, the mayor, if he's found guilty in violation, that is a felony. For all the city councilmen, that is a misdemeanor. And in the city charter, it basically states that if you have a misdemeanor or a felony, that's cause, show cause for, uh, removal, recall, okay? And the, and the onus, when he, when he goes to this, when he goes to this discovery, he's going to have a field day, and I'm going to help him every bit I can because, guess what? I was a brigade legal clerk, and I'm no dummy, and I swear to God, I'll give it every bit of effort. And then when you want to talk about having the police department incorporated in the sheriff's department? Guess what, you were debating this a year ago with John Anker. It's on WTVM News, and guess what? Where there's smoke, there's fire in the army, okay? When it, that's, that's the terms, where there's smoke, there's fire. You guys intended to get rid of him a long time ago. You cut off the head, guess what? Then you can do whatever you want to, but guess what? The two assistants, Dentz, Fitzpatrick, and also Kennedy, they'll be gone too because whenever you incorporate, guess what? The staff, they don't need that, that's redundancy, okay? And then lastly, I want to talk about Public Safety Advisory Commission, which our, our buddy Byron Hickey's on. Uh, guess what, he stated that during the meeting, city manager, mayor deflected what was really being said and pulled the race card. Well, guess what? Their mission statement is to work with and support everything they can as far as the police and, and not be divisive. He was there. But what's really troubling is they haven't had a meeting, you got to go up to WW Columbus GA.org, go to boards, go to, to basically Public Safety Advisory Commission, and you'll see that basically they haven't had a meeting for a year. And the thing is, is that in that, Donald Watkins stated that he would like to know where the, all the funds from the 2009.
Mr. Olson, that's all your time, no, that's all your time. No, I don't, I don't. Can we get Mr. Olson to sit down, please? All right, that's all of the public agenda. Oh, we'll move now to the city manager's agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First on my agenda is request an approval to provide $1,500 quarterly retention bonuses for calendar year 2023 to full-time sworn officers and full-time 911 communications technicians.
Let's, let's, let's wait just a minute and let these folks clear out. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Counselor Thomas to the motion?
Uh, yes. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to table this item until we can get some more definitive information from the finance department and the city manager's office on how this will work as it relates to the budget. And I would like to table this until we have budget discussions to implement this as part of the fiscal '24 budget.
If council decides to vote that, we can do that. But the idea, I think, was to try to get something. to get something in place at, at the request of the, uh, the chief for retention purposes prior to the budget.
I understand that, but. This covers two fiscal year budgets, and I would, it was not discussed in the fiscal 23-year budget presentation, and I would like to request that it be tabled until we have the 24 budget, uh, discussions, which happened, as I recall, uh, in the month of May.
And, and mayor, we're prepared to answer any questions tonight if there are questions.
If, there, there is a motion, uh, and a second, but if there are any questions with regards to how that would be paid for and how it would impact, I, I think the staff.
The motion on the table is to, uh, table this until.
Until the budget review sessions.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And so there, to ask questions at this point, uh, would be, uh, contrary to proper procedure. The, the questions that need to be, uh, proposed at this point are on the motion to table. If that motion passes or does not pass, then the motion that's on the table to adopt is in order, and can, those questions can be asked and answered.
Yes, ma'am. Was not trying to interfere with the process of making the motion, simply wanted to make sure people knew that if this were solely based on some of the questions, that some of the questions could be answered. But there is a motion and a second to table until the, uh, budget sessions. Uh, any more discussion to that particular motion?
And I wanted to make, uh, to a time certain, to the budget 2024 discussions, not just out there.
Okay, to the budget 2024 discussions. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that will, this will be tabled then until, uh, we, we enter into those budget discussions.
And so, mayor, again, we know that this was one of the requests that Chief Blackman made in his, uh, strategic plan.
That's out of order.
Well, we're, let's, let's, we'll continue with the, uh, the agenda. I think he was just pointing out that they, we had.
That's right, mayor. If I can't make any comments, just tell me to shut up.
And I don't think that's what's happening. We need you to just go on down the, the, to the next item.
Um, next, I've got Uptown Columbus, uh, City Chattahoochee River Park Management, M O U renewal.
Well, we, we gotta go through them each individually anyway, we may as well take them one at a time. What is the motion? What is the motion? No, you can. What is the motion? Do we have to get? All right. There's a. All right, there's a motion to approve item two through nine, we've had a request to pull item four, are there any, any others that need to be pulled? All right, well, let's, this is for two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yes. Counselor Kogle?
Um, for the Ogglethorpe Bridge and the Fourth Avenue, uh, replacement project, I know GDOT, uh, put out a, uh, um, a questionnaire on asking the public, uh, their opinions, and it was open for a brief amount of time, and, um, can we as a, uh, city put that out to the public to request any input from our citizens directly, um, in, um, suggestions that they might have for that bridge? For instance, like, uh, pedestrian activity?
So I, I think certainly Georgia DOT typically will have a public.
They already did, but it came out very, very briefly, so, uh, just as a city, can we put a question, questionnaire out there, um, allowing our citizens to put some?
I'll, I'll see if we can work something like that. It's a Georgia DOT project, and we'll work with them to see if we can figure something out.
Between us and Ph- us and Phoenix City on the pedestrian connecting?
Yeah.
Or leaving that open so that we don't have to go back, uh, retroactively, and if we wanted to add pedestrian access to Phoenix City, if they were to extend their Riverwalk, then to have to re- retroactively re-engineer that bridge, so, um, just to make that multipurpose.
I think the city manager had requested that they consider pedestrian and bicycle traffic for people going.
That's right.
Right. But just to open it up to the citizens, just for the, some of their input.
Mayor, we'll, we'll, we'll work to try and figure something out.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so that satisfied the question on item three, so we still have, uh, motion and a second to approve item two and three, and then five through nine. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right, we'll walk through all of them, but first, let's go on to item four, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, of course, we've, we've done Uptown Columbus, uh, M O U, we've got the Chattahoochee River Bridge Replacement Project, and that's the Ogglethorpe Bridge that we were just talking about. Uh, we are, um, wanting to put sidewalks and multi-use transportation facilities there. Then, uh, I believe Counselor Davis said something about four. We've got federal fiscal year 2024 congressional directed spending request, uh, for on-demand transit service through, uh.
Yeah, hold on, Counselor Davis?
You wanna wait on that one and go through the rest of them, or you wanna talk about it now?
Either way.
Go on, go on with four. Go ahead, we'll, we'll deal with four.
You want, okay, thank you. Pull that one. Then we've got.
Let's go ahead and do, deal with item four.
No, go, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager and Council, uh, I remember, uh, I remember when we first started talking about the T-Spots, we had a matter on there about parking ride, you remember? And we made some adjustments, and some of the questions, I think it was Counselor Allen had asked the questions at the time about funding and the, uh, how long would that source of funding last, and could we be able to sustain it? I, I know, look, I'm a big believer in this, cause I got constituents that are not far from one of the names listed on here, the VA clinic, and they need help, okay? And there's, we, we've got this, I, I guess, a territory, a range that we operate in that I was unaware of, but this kinda resolves that. I, I wanted to try to understand this from a standpoint, we're getting a grant, I don't really know what we're trying to accomplish by this, uh, as far as size, scope, mission, time, years, what, what, what we're doing here.
Yeah.
But I wanted to ask the question, is this, you know, we get funding for it, I don't know how many people we're hiring, uh, I, I, I'm just thinking five, 10 years out, is this something that we're gonna be able to keep going and going and going? What happens when the grant runs out? Are we still gonna continue to sustain it? I guess that's kinda what I'm.
Well.
Kinda what I'm aiming at right here in understanding this a little bit.
Well, it's.
Cause it is a grant.
It, it's a grant, and we do have T-Spots funding, $25 million, and this is an on-demand transit service. And of course, on-demand means they only provide that service upon request for those watching by television. And so they're not just running a van or a bus back and forth, only if you call in. And of course, T-Spots funding is for 10 years. And so, uh, if we're able to get this grant, match it with T-Spots funding, uh, then, you know, the, the service obviously would be secure for 10 years or longer. And, um, and, and I know Metro is here, but, um, but certainly, um, it will give us a chance to determine the level of demand. And, and, and what they have shared with us is that if they don't provide fixed route service to a particular area, they can only provide this demand response within a certain distance from a fixed route. 10 years from now, I don't know where the fixed routes will be, they probably won't be where they are now, and so we have an opportunity, but you've got 10 years or longer to look at this. And especially with this grant, it, it certainly could be longer.
Why don't you, I mean, it would be probably appropriate to just talk about the plan in general, what, you know, so there's probably people listening.
Well, and.
I know those constituents I represent are probably extremely happy right now listening to this.
Yeah, and, and this service, you know, with or without the grant, with or without the grant. Would, uh, provide, um, on-demand transit service to persons trying to get to the Porte Chef VA Clinic or the, uh, Department of Driver Services, uh, out in the Panhandle. Uh, but they would be able to call in 24 hours in advance, like you do on Dollar Rad, is that right? And, and then request a service, and if they request a service 24 hours in advance, they'll go pick them up, take them, and they'll do their business, and then they'll return to get them. And so, right now, um, they can get there, for example, at the Porte Chef VA Clinic, but they gotta come all the way downtown. If they live out in your area, they gotta come downtown, transfer to a bus, and then go. So there is service.
Not in that range.
Yes. So, but, I don't know if that answers your question.
No, I think this is great, I think, uh, here's an opportunity to maybe share with our citizens who are listening that will have this new, uh, new opportunity to now have that quick and rapid service that they've been asking about for so long.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, Mr. City Manager. This is definitely a win-win for our city, to be able to leverage our T-Spots funding and provide this additional service that we would otherwise not be able to. The city has to pay 100% for operating costs. Now, the federal government have these grants, and we're watching, you know, we're looking to see how we can take advantage of this, these funding opportunities. So if you recall, we were just awarded for a million dollars from Senator Ossoff, Senator Warnock.
Warnock.
Senator Warnock, um, for electric vehicles. So here we are, back going after additional funding to provide this on-demand service to areas that our fixed route and pair of transit buses do not service. So this is great, and as the city manager said, we will go as far as we can go, and we can see, um, if this service is needed, if, if it's something we need to continue to do. If it is, we will continue to go after federal funding to help subsidize these, these services. So what this is, is gonna pay 50% of the operating costs, instead of the city paying 100%. And then it'll pay, um, 80% of the capital which will purchase the buses.
Well, just give us an idea of what you're thinking, I mean, what the citizens' vision here, what are you, via, number of vehicles, I mean, are we gonna be hiring new people? I mean, help them understand what this is gonna look like.
Right now, we're looking at about four or five, um, non-CDL vehicles, about seven staff members with bus operators, a dispatcher, supervisor, because this service will probably go after the regular fixed route service hours. And so, um, we, we just have to see, there may be some other places that people are trying to get to, maybe workplaces. The VA, they're fully supportive of it, so we have to provide a support letter to, um, Senator Ossoff's office, and we've already reached out to the VA, they're fully supportive. Um, but it, but it's gonna be a, we are going to, you are gonna decide what areas outside of our service area that we wanna provide the service to. It may be Pratt &amp; Whitney, you know, that we don't go to Pratt &amp; Whitney. It may be some locations further out, uh, Schaumburg Road, Blackman Road, we don't go those areas. So on the fixed route or pair of transit. So we really are working through right now, we're trying to get the funding, get it approved, and, and that's what we're here for today, to get your approval for us to submit application for it. And then, once that's done, we'll wait, we'll wait to hear back.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. Motion approved.
All right, it's a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye? Anybody opposed? All right, that passes. Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, I, I like when we, um, actually go out and do the grants. I did wanna, um, I know we, I don't think we did an update on the $20 million infrastructure grant that we got some time ago. Did we get an update on that? The infrastructure money for, I think, was it Metro or Transportation?
20 million.
20 million.
You mean?
From Ossoff.
2012 T-Spots, 25 million?
No, 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 we were going to apply for, for 20 million.
I thought it was, uh, it was allocated, like automatically allocated, cause they had different, they had an allocation that we would apply for. This was in 2021, um, right when the COVID money started coming, but the infrastructure, the bipartisan.
No.
Infrastructure and Jobs Act.
Um, no, um, I don't recall specifically what you're talking about, but let me, let me just.
Possible, can we look into it? Cause I know it was some money that we had talked about, remember we did like a press, a press conference in reference to the money, I think, um, Representative Calvin Smyrie was involved.
Over at Metro?
Yes, and it was, it was like 20, and, and Senator Ossoff, it came down.
Yeah, I, I remember I was over at Metro when that happened, but we didn't get $20 million.
No.
Yeah.
But what we did get was the four.
Yeah, let me just say, um, like, what, what we're requesting here is to apply and accept a grant if approved. And a lot of, when we come, you know, wanna make sure we, we focus on apply and accept. So we are applying for, uh, this, this, this money, um, through Ossoff's office, for example, but we may or may not get approved, so I, I don't, we'll look into what you're talking about, I don't, I'm not, cause I remember I was over at Metro, and I think it was. Yeah. Yeah, but we, yeah, but. Yeah, let, let me look into, I, I remember being over there. But anyway.
All right, so item four is, uh, is approved. Mr. City Manager, if you would just kind of brief the council and the public on items five through nine?
Uh, fi- five is a Violence Against Women Act, uh, grand award, it's 16, uh, excuse me, $50,000 with a 16,000, six, six, seven match. Then six is, um, a, um, after-school network boost grant, it's 65,000, there's no match. And then seven, uh, is a donation, uh, from pieces of tables and chairs, uh, with an estimated value of $2,500. Uh, then we've got, uh, 52,500 dollar family connection grant, no match. Uh, and then we've got donation request for the 2023 Columbus Civic Center Juneteenth Jubilee, and that will allow us to accept donations, um, for that event, annual event. And, uh, then, of course, I've got purchases, uh, I've got overhead door installation and maintenance services, um, and the, um, uh, approximately $9,500 per fiscal year is what we're looking at there, we're asking for your approval on item A.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve, uh, the purchases, uh, A through M, we will go over them individually in a moment, but are there any that anybody would like pulled for further discussion? Yeah, which one?
Current building or is that in the new building? This, I'm sorry, it's L.
I T, that is in the, uh, it's going to be in the new building, the firewall.
Firewall's over here.
Here, okay.
In this building? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
All right, are there any other items somebody, anybody would like pulled? Hearing none, uh, all in favor of approving purchases A through M, please say aye? Any opposed? Mr. City Manager, if you would explain those.
Alternators and starters for Metro, I've got Metro, uh, Roll With Us, uh, program. I've got, um, a contract extension for Consolidate Plan, Annual Action Plan, CAPR, this comes to you on an annual basis, so it's not anything new that you haven't seen. Got workers, uh, compensation, claim management services, uh, got maintenance, repair, and operation, industrial supplies, this is with Public Works Facility Maintenance, front-end loader with parts and rec, uh, Park Services Division, we've got a gator, uh, for parts and rec, uh, Park Service, uh, Division. Uh, I've got industrial sync with, um, uh, disposal for the Musco County Prison. Uh, I've got cloud-based phone system and contract center for information technology, and then the call tower for cloud-based phone system for information technology. And then the firewall upgrade, uh, for information technology that Counselor Thomas just asked a question about. Got plumbing services for Public Works Department. Got plumbing services for Public Works Department. Um, and then I've got, just for your information, an emergency purchase that I did approve for, uh, the, um, coroner for a forensic transport vehicle. Um, and, um, so we did get that approved.
Counselor Thomas?
Um, Mr. City Manager, um, I'm sure that you've seen some of the media coverage about the, um, uh, emergency purchase need. Would you speak to that? As I understand it, as soon as you got the request from the coroner's office for a new, um, uh,
Transport, transport vehicle.
Van, you granted it, right? We've ordered that, right?
Well, we have, and I asked him to send me a request. He didn't call me with the request. Yeah, and then when we were, I had a conversation with him, and I asked him to send me a request.
I guess my point is, as soon as you became aware of the need, you took care of it.
That's correct.
And I'm wanting, I I'm wanting to make that point, quite frankly, because we have been, um, it's been the headline in the paper, at least, um, that somehow or another, we weren't, you weren't doing your job. And I think that this is exactly what needed to be done. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it'd be in reference to that, we we did get a bad rep for, um, this. And I think it's just good to say that, you know, when requests come, they come directly to you.
That's right.
And you handle them. You bring them, if it's an emergency, you handle it. Or if you have to bring the council to vote, we handle it by then.
Absolutely.
The requests come first to you to be handled.
Right.
And that's the way we should do things, you know?
That's right.
You you're the first line of defense when it comes to to the budget.
That's right.
All right.
So so Mayor, I've got a few updates, a finance update, and we're gonna try and keep these really short. Uh, but the finance update, and then we'll follow with a city hall parking garage update. Uh, so Finance Director Angelica Alexander.
All right, Crystal, can I have one? Thank you.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of council. Um, so what, uh, you have before you is the monthly, uh, finance update comparing February twenty-twenty-three to February twenty-twenty-two. And so, starting at the right side of the snapshot there with the general fund, the general fund is up three point four eight percent. Um, that is largely due to some of our franchise revenue. Uh, we received more than we anticipated from, um, some of our franchises, as well as our insurance premium taxes. Uh, the other local option sales tax fund is up seven point two five percent. Um, the other local option sales tax fund includes, uh, the OLOS, uh, sales tax that's applicable to public safety. You know, seventy percent is allocated to public safety, thirty percent is allocated to infrastructure. And all of it, for those purposes, stays within the other local option sales tax fund. Uh, the stormwater fund is up five point three zero percent, paving fund up four point seven one percent. The indigent care fund is down, uh, fifteen point seven one percent, but we knew that this, uh, would happen this particular fiscal year. Due to the millage adjustment, we reallocated point five, uh, mills from indigent care to the debt service to cover the costs of the new city hall. And so that is the reason why it is showing that that fund is down. Uh, previously, this fund was known as the Medical Center Fund, but we've retitled it to Indigent Care. The Integrated Waste Fund is up sixteen point nine five percent. This is largely due to the residential fee waiver that council approved. So there was a fee waiver, uh, that took place in FY twenty-two. Uh, FY twenty-three, there was no such waiver, and so the revenues that we anticipated, uh, for that fund, we've received this year in full. Um, the E-nine-one-one fund is, uh, down two point three five percent. Again, we have no control over the collection or the, uh, fees that are set for the E-nine-one-one fund. That is all handled by the state, and that is currently down slightly. The Economic Development Authority Fund is up point seven zero, I'm sorry, point seven eight percent. The debt service fund is up twenty-five point two eight percent. And again, that is, um, attributed to the reallocation of the point five mills. So we did anticipate that to be up a bit this year, as well as some transfer, uh, transfers into that fund related to some GMA leases that were approved last year. The transportation fund is down twenty-two point two six percent. Um, this is due to the timing of receipts for grant funding, um, reimbursement. Uh, we had, uh, um, some cares, excuse me, funding that we received last year for some capital purchases. And so that, uh, decrease there is because of that reimbursement that we received related to that item. The Trade Center Fund is up nineteen point zero eight percent. Bull Creek Golf Course Fund up twenty-nine point nine two percent. And the Oxco Creek Golf Course Fund up thirty-five point zero three percent. Um, the Civic Center Fund is, uh, showing a decline there of thirty-one point nine zero percent. But again, this is a grant situation. Last fiscal year, we received, uh, one point three million in grants, um, in the Civic Center Fund. So we knew that, um, it would show a decline this particular fiscal year. Moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax, uh, public safety summary.
Excuse, excuse me, Ms. Alexander, Counselor Davis, a question.
Yeah, that, um, Madam Finance Director, back to the Civic Center Fund. You said that's due to, uh, the lack of funding from grants, but what what does that normally average about this time of the year?
I would say that they're on par, um, last fiscal year compared to, uh, this fiscal year in terms of the, um, event services, uh, revenue. Um, give me just a moment here. For the events at the Civic Center, we recorded, um, last fiscal year about seven hundred, in in ticket sales, about seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, um, up to this point in time, and this year, it's about seven hundred and fifty-four thousand. So from from a ticket sales standpoint, we're pretty much on par with where we were. Um, so the 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 decrease here is really the 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 lack in the grant funding.
So you're just measuring that from a, uh, a sales standpoint and which would equate to an average number as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that would be, uh, prior, I'm assuming that would be about average even prior to all the grant funding?
Yes, I mean, particularly when we're looking at ticket sales, I mean, they're pretty much on par with where they are as of February, as of this point in the fiscal year.
Good, okay, thank you.
Uh, moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax public safety summary, we recorded about nineteen point three, I'm sorry, nineteen point three million to date in revenue, um, expenditures of about twenty-one point, uh, one, uh, in public safety OLOS expenditures. You'll see that that number, um, likely for the end of this, as we move towards the end of this fiscal year, will increase. Um, that's largely due to the, uh, budget amendments that were made, um, recently, where there was a lot of, um, public safety capital, um, that was approved as part of the mid-year budget amendment. So, um, I anticipate that we'll we'll see that number, uh, increase as we move towards the end of the year. Um, the other local option sales tax summary for, uh, infrastructure, we've recorded eight point three million to date, and we have about seven point, uh, one million in expenditures. Uh, moving so sort of to the left side of the snapshot there in terms of the general fund expenditures, um, the goal at this particular point in the fiscal year is to be about at, uh, thirty-three percent of your budget. Um, the departments that you see highlighted there are the departments that are either right below, slightly below the goal or right at the the goal mark, um, sort of starting with the, uh, city attorney's litigation. Um, that's currently at, uh, twenty-eight percent. Um, the employee benefits is currently at twenty-seven percent. And that is, uh, I don't anticipate that exceeding the budget. You know, we do have, um, one-time payments that we make related to employee, um, disability and, uh, death benefit payments. Um, so I don't anticipate that being an over-budget situation as we close out the fiscal year. Um, we do have MCP here that is listed right at, um, thirty percent. And, uh, the public defender, uh, is right at thirty-one percent. That is largely due to that public defender contract that we pay for our contract public defenders. We pay that contract a month in advance, so it's always gonna show as being sort of out of line with our goals here. And then there is the, uh, non-categorical, um, department that's listed there at nineteen percent. And that non-categorical department is where we perform our transfers. So when we transfer money to other funds, like we did this year for the pay play plan implementation, uh, when we, when we transfer money to our, uh, capital improvement program, like we did as part of the mid-year budget amendment, that all takes place in that particular fund. Do not foresee that being an over-budget situation as we close out the fiscal year, but those transfers did, um, actually happen, occur in February. So that in a nutshell is the, uh, finance update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Counselor, uh, House?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one, reserve days right now, what do we have roughly?
I believe, um, as we, um, cuz it's not really something that we tally on, on like a daily or monthly basis, but as we made adjustments for the mid-year budget, um, we were right at, uh, I believe it was a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, you don't you know the breakdown between general fund and OLOS roughly?
Um, the destination in, uh, fund balance reserves was all in general fund. Um, the reserves that we're using in OLOS was funding that we actually did set aside, um, in FY twenty to use, so it would not impact the the reserve days that was previously reported.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, we want to hear from Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge on city hall parking garage.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is an update, uh, related to the city hall, the parking garage options. Uh, we came to you at the last meeting and talked about some options. And so this presentation is an update from that to, um, come back with some options based on the information that we heard from city council. And just as a reminder, this is a six hundred and thirty-four space parking deck. We talked about the different levels. Level one is fifty-three spaces, and then levels two through six is a hundred and sixteen spaces. Um, the top level is not covered, so that sixth level is, um, an uncovered level. Right now, Sanovis utilizes, per our agreement with them, two hundred and thirty spaces until they move out, which is anticipated to be, uh, July of twenty-twenty-four. We need about two hundred spaces of our employees and fleet vehicles when we start the move-in into city hall in June of twenty-three. And then, once we have the, uh, Sanovis vacates and we move the rest of the, uh, offices over to city hall, that's an additional hundred and fifty spaces. So option one, which was employee parking only, uh, we heard from you at the last meeting, that was not really a supported option. So we looked at, we have four additional options, uh, for discussion, uh, this evening. So option two would be to allow public parking on the first floor alone, which would be fifty-three spaces during business hours only. And so that's one of the questions, uh, does council want to allow, uh, public parking in our city garage during business hours, eight to five, or open twenty-four seven? So that's one of the questions, um, that needs to be answered, as well as do we want to allow public parking on the first floor only or first floor and second floor? So that's really the four options. We do recommend two-hour parking during business hours. Um, that's so this parking garage can be utilized for our, um, citizens who are coming to visit city hall. Uh, that's our our highest priority, and we feel that if we have two-hour parking, most business that conducted with the city office could be done within those two hours. If there's not two-hour parking, the concern would be that it would be utilized by others in the uptown area and not be available for public parking to visit, uh, city hall. Uh, the other thing is, uh, we will be securing the garage, um, with a fence and gates based on which levels are selected. If it's closed for all business hours, obviously, we'd have to put up a fence and a gate so that we could lock the garage down at a particular time. If it's not open, if it's open twenty-four seven, we would have that mechanism in place either at the first or the second floor, depending on which option council selects. Um, obviously, we need parking spaces for the government center employees. If during the construction of the judicial center, we need additional spaces, so we wanna make sure that we have those available for city employees. And also, this particular option does provide the public with parking spaces during business hours. Then option three would be first-level parking at all times. So again, that's the question for council during business hours or twenty-four seven. Again, we would recommend the two-hour parking, uh, during business hours, eight to five, and then it could be open, um, after that point. Um, upper levels of the garage, again, would be secured, uh, for, um, city employees access only. And this would, uh, option does provide that additional space that could be utilized for the judicial center, um, while it's in construction. There is a concern, when it's open at all times, about the liability after hours in the evenings. Um, so that is something that council needs to consider is, you know, how the garage will be utilized after hours into the evenings. We will have the garage, um, lighting, um, improved, as well as there will be cameras in the garage. Option four would be first and second level, uh, public parking during business hours. This would be a hundred and sixty-nine spaces that would be available to the public. Again, we would recommend the two-hour parking on both of those levels to allow citizens to, uh, conduct business, uh, with city offices. And then option five would be the first and second levels, um, public parking at all times. This would be the hundred and sixty-nine spaces. Again, would be two-hour parking from eight to five, and then would be open after that from five P.M. until eight A.M. the next morning. Again, concern with liability after hours when it gets, uh, later in the evenings, uh, that's always a concern. And happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor Thomas?
Um, Ms. Hodge, I I have been approached by a number of the, um, businesses and so forth in downtown Columbus, uptown Columbus, wanting to be sure that, wanting to, us to provide, if possible, uh, parking for their employees, particularly, uh, after, uh, business hours. Um, and some of them have said, uh, twenty-four seven. I know I got, for example, I got a call from the, um, um, Trinity of Fiscal Church that they would like to be able to, for their church congregation to be able to use the parking garage, uh, during, on Sunday, when they have services and that sort of thing. Um, and, um, we also had talked about, um, the possibility, uh, perhaps, um, for the, some of the businesses in downtown Columbus to, um, lease, if you will, um, a certain number of parking places for their employees, uh, during evening and, uh, on the weekend. Um, and I'm hoping that you're looking into all of those kinds of things to see how much we would need to charge, how much we, you know, what kind of offset on, any kind of liability would that be? Um, so that we can provide for the uptown Columbus Business District as much parking as as they need. Uh, I think one of the, one of the things that I was told, and as I had been telling other people, one of the business people said to us, um, our employees right now park in front of my business, and if we could park in the garage, uh, customers could park in front of my business. And I had people say, yes, you know, get those, get the employees a parking place, but give us something right in front of the business to to carry on our business. So I'm hoping that all of those kinds of things are going to be, uh, seriously considered, and let's see if we can't work that out with the businesses and with uptown, um, to see if we can't do something along that line. And I I also believe, I think I'm right on this, that there are some loft apartments that currently park in that garage, and would, you know, if that would, uh, if those people would stay. that currently park in that garage, and would, you know, if that would, uh, if those people would stay, uh, what is the, uh, arrangement with them and, and some of those kinds of things?
Yes, we are looking into that. One thing I would, uh, just mention, uh, Assistant City Attorney Lucy Scheptall has also talked to our bond counsel. As part of the bond issue that was utilized to purchase the building, we did some taxable and some tax exempt, and so we don't want to jeopardize the tax-exempt portion. Part of that requirement is a third of the garage was allocated for taxable bonds. So out of the six hundred and thirty-four spaces, two hundred and twelve could be used for private. Sanovis is using those spaces now, so we wouldn't want to allocate any private spaces until after Sanovis vacates, and then we definitely can, can look at that. So we just need to keep that in mind so we don't jeopardize that financing that we have for taxable versus tax-exempt.
And you, uh, are you proposing that we not do anything about that until after, uh, twenty twenty-five? I think he said, Sanovis is out twenty twenty-five?
If we have it open to the public and it's free of charge or a standard charge, then it's open to the public, that's fine. It's when we would reserve spaces for a particular business.
Ah, okay.
That's when we would get into a private use.
Okay, so that if we said, "These, these parking places are reserved for business," ABC, eh, eh, okay, but as long as they're...
It's open to the public.
Open to the public.
Then, then we're fine.
Then our taxes is okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I'm just, I just hope that we're giving some real serious consideration, um, to make sure that we can not only accommodate the people who have business with the city, uh, coming into that, um, garage, but also the people who can use it after hours for whatever, uh, purpose that, um, whoever needs to, to be there. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Kogle?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, the parking garage here is open twenty-four seven, correct? Uh, I mean, I, I park there all the time. Um, what's the, uh, what is the liability difference between this parking garage, the River Center parking garage, or any of the parking garages that are downtown compared to that Sanovis building?
So I think the difference with this one in particular is there's not activities here where there would be a need for parking.
I mean, there's swim meets, there's, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot after hour activities.
But not as there is in the Uptown area. So it's just, it's just a concern of liability, you know, when you have a lot of nightlife-type activities, um, you just need to be aware.
But it should be on the same page, basically, as the River Center and the other parking garages that are downtown. So I don't, I'm not sure where the liability portion comes in if we have some of the other parking garages that are open. The, um, I think we're gonna probably run into some issues if we limit, uh, two-hour parking, and, uh, and I can speak from working downtown for several years, that parking for those, um, individuals, and, and I think Judy, uh, touched on it a little bit, of being able to pull those employees off the streets to open that up for, um, better merchant, better relationships with our, with our merchants is gonna be, um, is gonna be important.
Just, also, I would comment, the River Center parking garage, which is one block this way as opposed to one block this way.
Right, but that's, I mean, if you're looking, right, but this is like in the center, in the, in the hub of, of Uptown. You're talking about the River Center, which is, uh, all the way south. And so if you're talking about all the way south, and you're working, uh, on the ten-hundred block, or you're working on the twelve-hundred block, that doesn't, uh, we would like to be a, a, a walkable city, but in all reality, we're not a walkable culture. So as much as that pains me as a health professional, so, so, um, but I would like us to be a walkable culture, but, uh, but honestly, we're not. So, um, I, I, I would, I would like to see, and I know a lot of my constituents would like to see, that be twenty-four seven, no limit on, on that parking, um, with a minimum of two floors, so available to, to Uptown. Um, what does the fencing look like? Do you know?
If it's open twenty-four seven, then we would not put fencing up, um, on the ground floor.
Or it would just be barricades then, up on the other floors?
But if, um, up on the third floor, to get to the third floor, there would be a gate with a gate arm that would be badge-controlled access for city employees only and fleet vehicles.
And is there any, um, is there any collaboration with, uh, Uptown on them being able to park some of their vehicles up there as well? Or is that just, is that open for discussion?
That's, we have not had any discussion, um, with Uptown about them parking their vehicles in a city garage. Um, typically, it would be controlled for city employees and city equipment. So we'll have a lot of the city vehicles and equipment located in the garage as well, and wanted to make sure that we have it secured after hours.
Thanks.
And so, um...
Got a few more.
To, to her, uh, Counselor Kogle's comment about the two hours. Any concerns about, um, employees in and around the garage, filling up the garage because it's covered and, and I can go to work and park, and then citizens come down to conduct business, and there are no parking spaces?
Count? Okay.
But if we're talking about...
Like, uh, if we're talking about having six floors, and you're talking about a hundred and fifty parking spots needed for the city, that should be the top, we'll give, we'll say the top two floors. And if we have public parking on the bottom two floors, there should be at least a hundred and fifty-plus spaces for...
So we'll need, in the end, um, at least three hundred and fifty spaces. So that would be three floors, um, so that would be the third, fourth, and fifth floor. The sixth floor is not a covered floor, so, um, that would not be something we would want to offer to our employees if they're there every day.
Do we know at any given time, um, how many people are, or how many parking spots are being taken up here at, at any given time? Like, if I go drive through the garage, other than during tax time, because I just walked downstairs, and there, there's some people waiting for four hours in line to pay their taxes. But, um, like, at any other, at, at any given time, this parking garage is fairly empty, um, at the times that I've been here, and I've been here at peak times and at low times. Do we know how many parking spots are actually used on a regular basis in this footprint, excluding the library?
Um, I do not know, but we can look at the number of parking spaces that's in this facility here and how many employees there are. Um, that's what we're calculating here, is the number of employees and city vehicles that would be housed in that parking garage. That's where the three fifty is coming from. So that would take three, four, and five.
Right, but if we know how many citizens are in and out of this building at any given time, that would be helpful, I think, to have an idea of how, how much transient traffic that we have in here.
Well, yeah, but we're gonna have people coming from this building, your building, the annex, and the government center, and the east and west wings eventually. So, I mean, it's, and...
Yeah, I, I mean, we can look at the traffic, because we'll have the, the traffic, citizen traffic to the mayor's office, the city manager's office. We'll have citizen traffic for the revenue division downstairs, as well as Parks and Recreation, three-one-one. We'll also have citizen traffic for, um, the inspection and codes and engineering. Um, and so I know at the annex, we have, um, probably twenty-five spaces across the street and in our parking garage, and they're full most of the time for transactions.
Maybe we should become a walkable city and park in the River Center parking garage.
And so, Mayor, we, we are, I know you've got more questions, but, but we are gonna need some direction because you've got a TAM land, that you, because we're gonna be moving into that building the end of May, first of June. So we gotta decide on parking, and, you know, there's some big decisions that, that's gotta be made. Uh, and I guess I don't know, and maybe, I, you know, I don't know how many employers are, you know, around the garage, private employers, and, or how many employees they all have. But if we make the parking available, um, I, I'm just, my concern, and I just can't gauge it, is that people are gonna come in, they're gonna park, and they're gonna be there all day, and then when citizens come, they're gonna drive into the garage and realize there are no parking space, and then they're gonna be out in the street looking. I don't know that. I mean, it's hard to, to gauge.
I mean, that's what the businesses are doing right now. I, I mean, I think, um, I mean, there are a couple of business owners, uh, in the, in the audience, if the, can, can they come up and speak?
Yeah, we've got a few more counselors, and we'll, we'll call them up.
All right.
All right, Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of questions, um, Deputy City Manager. Uh, regarding the one-stop shop, which, which, uh, offices are moving out of this building and down to that? And how will that be coordinated?
So the, the offices that are moving out of this building is Parks and Recreation and three-one-one, and the Revenue Division of Finance. The Revenue Division of Finance will not move until twenty twenty-five, um, because they'll be in the ground floor where the bank is on the executive level, so they'll be in phase two. Uh, but Parks and Recreation and three-one-one will be in phase one.
Okay, the, I, I guess, I was thinking one-stop shop was here, but, but we're doing, we're drifting away from that.
Well, the one-stop shop, um, really between business license and inspection and codes is really where it needs to happen, and both of those offices will be moving from the annex and from this building at the same time in twenty twenty-five, so...
That makes sense.
Hopefully, we'll create that synergy, uh, soon.
That makes sense. Um, the, uh, other question I had regarding those that may want to park in the, uh, in the facility, in the parking garage. We have the, as, as, as been mentioned, the, uh, the, I guess, the, the, the ownership that walk, I think they're on the third floor, and they, they have condos there. Uh, what are there, six? Are there six folks?
Yeah, I believe there are six, and we'll have to work through a process with the sheriff's office because they would be up on the employee floor. And so there will need to be some clearance that the sheriff's office will need to give them to provide them access to basically a city employee, uh, parking level.
Well, that's, that's where I was headed with it. It, what, we're, we're gonna set up a system for them and possibly others, but, uh, I guess, I guess, Uptown is interested in having some parking available for their employees. Uh, so what I was thinking is we could do the same thing with them. Have them go through the sheriff's office, receive the, whatever they gotta do there, the background checks. I don't know what kind of fees are associated with that. Um, I know the owner of the condo for the six that we talked about is willing to pay all that, and, uh, so anyway. What I was trying to get to is that, could we set up some type of background check? Give them a card that they could access the garage, and so we would know when they're coming in and out.
So the parking would be employees on three, four, and five, so that would mean they would have to park on six, which is the open space up at the very top. If that would be parking, we could allocate to, uh, business employees. Um, if we wanted them to go that far, another option would be to have two-hour parking on the ground level, which is the fifty-three spaces, and no time parking on the second level. Um, and that way, it gives those who are doing business with the city or two-hour parking to come in and do their business, and the second level could potentially not have a time restriction on that. Um, that's an option as well.
Okay, all right. Well, as long as you're considering it, thank you. Appreciate it.
One thing I will mention also, as I did reach out to Sanovis, and one of the issues, the reason that they closed the garage down, they had no, um, access from the public, except they did allow a few businesses to have leases, and they also allowed the church to park there on Sundays, is they were having, um, not enough spaces for their employees to park in the garage because there was so many, um, open to public parking. So that's one of the reasons that they closed the garage down to employees only and just specific leases.
Counselor Davis?
Thanks, ma'am. I'm gonna take a little detour here real quick, um, based on what she just said. You just said that there's probably gonna be a lot of available space in this building. A lot of people are gonna be moving out to coordinate some unity in, in the other building. Uh, you know, just hit me, you know, when we originally thought about this building and establishing this building, there was the intent to put a police precinct here. And, you know, i- if anything, we can have a conversation on, on space, the, the use of space, but I think that might be something that we can, uh, revisit as well. Uh, anyway, so let me get back on the parking, uh, parking deck matter. Uh, you had mentioned that, I think, two floors is one sixty-six in parking spaces? I think I remember that number, if I remember it right?
One sixteen for two through six, and fifty-three on level one.
One sixteen total on two floors, one sixteen per floor.
One sixteen per floor.
Per floor.
And, and fifty-three on the first floor.
Okay, so that's your...
So first and second is one sixty-nine.
You said there was a limit on the two-thirty, uh, um, two-thirty, that, that, a third? You mentioned that earlier.
Yes.
Okay.
So Sanovis is using those private spaces now, so that's part of the reason of the calculation that we did.
Well, I took that as that the, something to do with the, the bonds that, uh, that, in order to keep the status, you couldn't use more than two-thirty?
Than a, than a third for private use.
A third for private use?
Yes.
Okay. Let me, let me throw this out. Uh, Ms. City Manager, what, what about the, uh, can we do multiple access points for security and, and, uh, barriers on these floors, just in case we wanted to open, uh, open them up for events or some specific use at a, at a certain time? Um, I, I don't know where this is going, other than there's been some ideas floated around and more conversation that needs to be had, but, uh, is that a possibility? So you could still secure, say, the fourth floor, but you could open the third and still allow for more parking in the future, if that's possible? It would take some, you know, the architects to get a little creative, but you could create multiple barrier, security barriers in order to do that in the future. I don't know what, how many vehicles you're exactly gonna store down there twenty-four seven, but certainly the employees are not gonna be there twenty-four seven. Uh, so could that help or assist? I'm just kinda throwing that out there, uh, the possibility there. Uh, so you can make adjustments anytime that way.
We, we could, so we're gonna install, based on council's decision, a access point for employees at the third floor level for three through six. That will require us to install a gate, a gate arm, and then a closure gate, so there's no access after hours. We would have to duplicate that on upper floors. Now, we will lose parking spaces based on the installation of that because it is kind of on the half-ramp going ups, which there are spaces. So there will be a portion of that floor that will lose parking spaces to install a gate. But in the budget that we have for City Hall, we do not have the budget to install multiple gates.
Well, that, we can help you there. I don't, I don't see that as being a problem. But, uh, i- it may be something that needs to be mixed into the conversation. Yeah, so it's an idea.
Counselor, Counselor Crab?
Thank you. So what are your intents, um, intentions for using the top floor?
So typically, the top floor wouldn't be covered, um, so we would prefer to offer employees-covered parking. Um, and we wouldn't want to store equipment on the top floor. Um, we would prefer that that be covered. It's currently, uh, most of our, not city vehicles, but a lot of our equipment is in, uh, covered garages. So at this point, it would be overflow parking, if we needed overflow parking for the sixth level, which is the top level.
So that's a hundred and sixteen, um, parking spaces that basically aren't gonna be used very often?
Basically.
Okay. Um, about the equipment and the cars and things like that, that you're gonna be storing, do they have to be stored on that location? Because when we... Do they have to be stored on that location? Because when we empty this building out, well, when we, the employees here. Will probably have extra parking here. Could they be u- could some of this area be used for extra parking to open it up? Open up some extra spaces in that parking?
So this would be city vehicles that employees use this is on a daily basis. They drive their personal vehicle to work. They're an inspector, they take their city vehicle out, so.
Okay.
I would hesitate to say that that would be effective to have their vehicle in a different location.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Do you have charging stations available?
We are looking at installing charging stations at our new facilities. Um, we have not looked at this particular facility. I know the city manager has asked us to look at existing facilities as well, and so we are looking at parking garages. It's not part of the budget for City Hall. It would be separate as we're looking at for charging stations across our city facilities.
You know, again, I'm thinking out of the box here, uh, you know, I'm not sure if we have a quote station. Or a like a main hookup for electric vehicles, but certainly. In the past, just in our industry, there's a lot of programs out there that will provide you the infrastructure. You just gotta provide the juice. So I I I don't know, and you're hearing a lot of this stuff that's already in these infrastructure packages. There may be opportunities out there, grants. Uh, sources of revenue that if, you know, you're focusing in that direction. Of renewables that you can uh you can do that. I don't know, is there any major charging station in the Uptown right now?
Yeah, Metro's actually leading the charge on the charging stations. I don't know if Deputy City Manager Goodwin wants to address that. But they are, you know, looking at charging stations at city facilities.
And and.
Separate from this budget.
It's my understanding that uh Metro is looking at charging stations at the city, new City Hall parking garage. Well, I don't know. Well, and she said all of the garages. There's some vendors that used to be, actually, they're connected to Tesla and there's some vendors out there that would. Install these, give you the equipment, install and put them in free of charge. Like I said, you just gotta provide the juice, but, you know, there. There's an opportunity there, so.
You know, and and there's also, and then Counselor Crab has another question, but I I I wanted to mention. Mar- uh Cherry Street, I think that's the name of the organization, they they will actually put a roof on your. Open aired top level of your garage in exchange for the renewable energy that they can draw from solar panels placed on top. So I I think, you know, that could add another hundred and sixteen spaces in exchange for them being able to harvest that solar energy. I I I think we ought to have a conversation. In fact, I ran into them at the renewable energy uh event held at Trinity, I think. And um it was it was pretty interesting. They were they were interested in talking to us about it. Counselor Crab?
I know that city manager wants to move this little decision on a little bit, and so. Um, out of all this discussion and everything that was said, the one that I that kind of. That I liked the best was the two-hour parking on the first level of the fifty-three. And then, you know, unlimited public parking on um level two, you know, no restrictions. That that was the one that kind of seemed to check the most boxes, in my opinion. So I just thought I'd get this ball rolling here and throw that out.
Well, we've got Ed Wolverton and and Jason and Buddy here from Uptown. I think it'd be, might be worth giving them a few minutes just to kind of respond to what they've heard going around the table.
Well, and. And and Mayor, I I will say to Counselor Crab, I I mean, I, that's an option and, I mean, we can try that. And and of course, just with an o- knowing that we may have to come back and say, here's how it's playing out. And we need you to authorize an adjustment. So I think that's, that would be great.
Good place to start. Ed?
Yeah.
Jason, you don't wanna make a few quick comments?
Cause we gotta do something.
Hey, guys, uh, Jason McKenzie with Ride On Bikes in Uptown Columbus. Uh, thanks again for having a chance to come up and share my side of it. You know, it feels like we're looking out a lot for the city employees, I understand that, but we also need to be looking out for our employees. Um, and we look out for the city business, people come to do busy business with the city, but not for the people coming to do business with the business owners in Uptown. And just as a, just a thought is, when you have to do busi- business with the city, you have to do business with the city. You're going to figure out parking. When you come to do business with Ride On Bikes, you can go somewhere else. And if there's not a parking option because every, all the all the employees downtown are parked in those areas, then we have to go somewhere else. And you don't have to do business in Uptown. But if I come to do business with the city, I have to figure it out. So I just want you to consider that when you look at these decisions is that we really need the extra parking. We are struggling down there right now with the construction. Not only they're taking up the entire parking garage, they're also taking up. And I know it's it's a temporary thing, taking up construction and all the trucks and stuff that are parked out on front, our First Avenue. This parking garage is super important to me. Obviously, I've been sitting here for three and a half hours just to be able to talk to y'all for two minutes, so. Please consider all the business owners down there. We've been working a long time to create this parking problem. Uh, I've been there twenty years myself, my family's been there longer. Having at least the bottom two floors, to me, the two-hour thing is ridiculous. It's hard to do any kind of business. You cannot come buy a bicycle and leave within two hours, it's not an option. And if my employees are parking there, it's to give my customers space to park, not only mine, but everybody uptown, if they are there throughout the day. They're having to go move their car around and all that. Y'all seen that garbage happen downtown for a long time. It just doesn't make sense for us. Thank you.
Thanks. Buddy?
Hey, I'm Buddy Nellum. I'm an Uptown merchant and property owner, uh, long-term. We play long ball. We're trying to be there. We've been there for a long time. We're gonna be there a long time, just like the parking garage is gonna be there, and we're excited about. The city center being reestablished here, cause that's more customer base for us too. So we're in the restaurant business, so it's it's a big deal. You know, this being a public asset, and just like any other business, making your asset be as most effective as possible. Is real important. I have the, and our our home office is in the White Bank Building, so we overlook the parking garage every day. And every day we see an empty parking garage. The use is very minimal right now. And uh, and so when I see an empty parking garage and yet I'm waiting for people to be uh come up to apply for a job in our business. And they right around the block, they call me, they can't figure out where to get place to get there, and they run a little bit late trying to get to their job interview. It's real frustrating, much less our customer base. So um, an ongoing inventory of these parking places, I know there's some changes and the dust is gonna settle somewhere down the line. It's gonna be so much use is gonna be there, and in my math, there's some excess parking that's gonna be available. And we need to make sure to use every piece of those parking places. The first two floors open for public parking, the third floor. And associate with some of the tenants down there, and we did a little inventory. We have about fifty people right now. That are already, some of them are already using the parking garage, um, architecture firm and some of the apartments. And some of the attorney's office and some of our office staff, we have come up with about fifty people that we that would use that parking garage every day during the week. For off-street parking, which would generate that much more on-street parking. So that's a big factor. And our business is day-to-day, so every day counts for us. Every day we gain customers and some days we lose customers. But our business is thriving and growing and the downtown area is going to get more popular as as better we get at what we do. And so uh, this has become a premium public asset. Something was mentioned earlier about special events. When there's a special event downtown, it's not just a celebration. Sometime there's a funeral downtown and the parking becomes stagnant. It's so stifling, you can't even get around it if there's a very popular person. So special events are not just weekends and nights, they're actually during the day also. And one thing that become, I've become aware of, is sitting here, I know there's fleet vehicles. I don't know if they're there all day long. Or do they leave during the day? Or are there being storage? And Ms. Crab brought up a real great point. If we're just storing vehicles, then that could be. A public asset that we could have more use of. The the, you know, this parking garage and um, like you, Ms. Thomas, I remember when Kirvins was there. And uh, is the only parking garage on the east side of Broadway. Which is very strategically placed. It supports so much of the the um, the businesses, the residents, also. The CSU, Springer, all the cultural arts is really focused right there around our business. Another thing that I challenge with is the two-hour parking. If it's just limited two-hour parking, if I'm coming to the government to do business. But yet I wanna eat lunch, hopefully. I wanna stay in there, maybe buy a bicycle or shop at one of our crafts. Because we're marketing for these people, they have the option to do that. And so the two-hour parking seems to be a very limited way of doing business, and I I don't ever recall going to a parking garage that had a two-hour limit. The street, yes, but actually the parking garage, I don't I don't ever recall that. Um, the. What you brought up about the solar panels on the roof is really a a major plus. It creates shade. It actually can be the charging station we were talking about too. So the solar panels, there's probably some funding out there for this. Could actually be the solar panels for the charging station for that also, sort of could be the thing. If you think about the weekends and the dynamics that happen down there, and we're in a growth mode. When the city is gone home on the weekends, we're thriving on the weekends and then the parking garage is two-thirds empty. So there needs to be a a real common sense approach here to use public access to the best of our ability to help our downtown area thrive. I really appreciate y'all driving into this and let's get the best out of our public assets. Thank you for including me.
Thank you, Buddy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Ed Wolverton with Uptown Columbus. So this is the, the great debate with Uptown Parking. Uh, every downtown across the country really struggles with this, and we hit on some hierarchies here that Buddy mentioned. So the on-street spa- parking, you do see most cities have some restrictions on that, whether it's time or meters or a combination of both. But those are the most convenient, those are the ones that are geared for those customers coming and going quickly. Then off-street, which is private lots or in this case garages, so the garages are more for the long-term users, trying to get them off the street. If they're not using their vehicle very much during the day, then that becomes the best place to put them. But the other thing I think we're also dealing with here is just some uncertainty, as the city manager pointed out. There uh, there's some things we just don't know right now, and with all the construction going on, that's created some issues. Before Sanovis made this land deal with the city, they had already basically closed the garage. So that for for public use, so that created this additional um conflict with lack of spaces. So uh perhaps experimentation is certainly in the mix here. Maybe you you do start off with. With not having those restrictions on the the publicly available space. If we find, after studying and now a- after a few months, if it's not working, then we can come back with a two-hour restriction. That does not get to your bigger question about where do we put the gates for the employees. So um, that's gonna be one that's a little more vexing, but if we can open up that upper floor. Through shades or through charging or whatever, then that becomes pretend, potentially a great spot for the fleet vehicles. That are going out anyway, so maybe that kinda helps free up some some space in the deck. So I hope that helps. I don't know if it does.
I think it does. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Counselor Kogle?
Just while we're on the topic of finding parking spots, I just uh, just saw my notes. Do we have an update on um the removal of the pickup parking spots for the uh restaurants that we talked about a couple of weeks ago? That we decided.
On the transit thing?
The, no, the the like pickup, the pickup only's parking spots in Uptown and around.
You're talking about the Metro service?
No, I'm talking about uh, like from restaurants uh that are designating parking spots in front of their building that we opened up for COVID. Um, we had talked a couple of weeks ago about removing those since we were done with that.
We can come, certainly come back with an update. We don't have one right now.
I I saw a couple today, so.
Yeah, yeah, they're a little bit of a deterrent when you're driving around trying to find parking.
So.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Just just a couple of thoughts. Um. I know the the two-hour limit. Uh, is there to help those uh have access to parking, but because um, some people park there all day long. And then the spaces are taken up and nobody really has access to them. So I understand that. Is there a way, well, let me go back. It seems like there's an option to put uh something, uh cover the sixth floor and have free up basically those a hundred and sixteen spaces. So would we then move for the first two levels up to the first three levels for public parking? And if we do that, would we be able to put, maybe put meters on the third floor? And allow people to go in there and park for an hour or two hours, and like Buddy said, if they need to stay three hours, they can put.
We can look at that.
Stay three hours.
The third level of the parking garage is the access to the building. So that's why we had designated the third and fourth level for employees because they would park and have direct access. To the second floor of the building. Um, and so if it moved them up, they would not have access to the bill, direct access to the building. They have to come down the stairs or the elevator to get into the building. So that was kinda where we designated three, four, and five, cause we need at least three hundred and fifty spaces in the top floor not being covered. But that is something that we can investigate is covering that top floor. Again, that's not in our budget for City Hall. Um, and so we just have to look at that.
Yeah, and if we're going to move to the building in June, we. The initial plan is gonna, we're gonna have to operate with what we have.
Yeah, trying to get ready for that, you understand.
And um, and so, Mayor, I don't know if there are any other questions around the table, but.
I'm not, I wasn't asking for meters on all floors. I was just asking maybe a meter on metered floor. One of the floors being metered that would allow people to stay longer if they needed to stay in downtown, uptown.
And we can also look at, if we, if you think fifty-three spaces of two-hour parking is too many. We can designate a certain number of spaces for two-hour parking. Our concern is employees that are coming or citizens that are coming to do business at the, at City Hall. Won't have spots if we don't somehow designate either a time space, because if it's employees that are parking there, they're typically gonna be there. All day, and so we don't want to not have any public parking spaces for people who are visiting a City Hall department.
So.
It occur, it occurs as well that, to me as well, that that um, if uh. Once, i- if we allow the twenty-four-seven access, which I think we have to do to try to support the after-hours uh activities that go on up there. We can tweak the timing and the stay, as the city manager pointed out, so we don't have to get it right, right out of the gate. We just listen to the merchants and we keep tweaking it till it till it works out. Counselor Kogle have one more question?
I I just, just to, in the interest of time, I I I'd just like to make a recommendation that we keep this uh, that we keep the two floors open for twenty-four hours. Um, seven days a week with no time limit. And then uh, and with the option of using that third floor with exploring the gate uh options to open that up. Um, on special events, but that, I'd just like to make that recommendation and.
I agree.
Move forward with that.
And and Mayor, uh, you know. We just need a, and we we need to term it temporary. Parking plan, cause we, I, once we do it for ninety days, six months, we may have to come back.
That's fine. I mean, we can reevaluate it, but just, I mean, that's uh, that's my recommendation. Based on constituents and um, just from what we've heard around the table, that it's twenty-four hours, no time limit.
Yeah.
Um, with the option of using that third floor.
Yeah.
Well, there is a motion in, there is a motion in the second to.
Can I make sure I'm clear? So I know where, we're installing a gate to. Allow parking for employees three through six, cause half of that is taken up by Sanovis at this point. And leaving one and two public parking open.
Twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven. Yes.
Right.
Yes, okay.
And I I think that's.
So that we have the option of opening up that third floor if we, for special events or funerals or. Five case. Or uh, an any, any special uptown concert series, anything that's not gonna uh interfere with ci- city business during city hours.
I think that's good.
All right, there is a motion in the second to rec that as form of a recommendation. To the motion, Counselor David.
Ms. City Manager, just make sure if that's what you're thinking about and you need to move forward now, just make sure the architect set up the infrastructure. If you need to do something going up to the fourth floor. Right. You can come back and do what you're talking about. It's got to be set up. Exactly. First in order.
You can come back and do what you're talking about. It's got to be set up right first in order to do that.
I agree.
We don't want to miss out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any vote. All right, that's Council's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and so with ARP, can we move these along, I mean fairly quickly?
Talk as fast as you want me to.
Okay.
Is this ARP first?
Yes.
So just to provide an update, and again, I will move through these quickly and I will not touch on um, information that we have talked about numerous times, and and I'll go to the projects. Um, and I have marked the ones that are complete, um, so that you kind of see a picture of how we're moving this funds forward. This is ARP phase one. Again, the automation of the garbage trucks. They are starting to um, build our trucks now. Public Works says uh, we'll be going to look at the first eleven trucks, I believe, in April. Um, and so that is starting to roll in. The carts are here, the ambulances are here. Um, you heard from Cure Violence, uh, the camera program. Uh, first phase is almost done and we're starting phases two and three. Uh, the summer youth program, we'll have the next round of the summer youth program, we actually met today, to plan for that summer youth program. Uh, broadband cybersecurity, uh, that's moving forward. I think there was something on the agenda today that moves that forward. Revenue recovery, public safety and essential employees is complete. Uh, small business grant program, this is our grant program that was done with our funding is complete. Uh, and then we're utilizing the administration funds uh, for um, our administration of ARP funding. Uh, the city manager kind of went through where we are with the state uh, fiscal recovery funds for the small grant program. So I won't uh, go through that again. Uh, as we look at phase two, funding for ARP. Uh, affordable housing, homeowner occupied rehab, utility assistance and handicap access. Uh, Director Rob Scott will follow me. Um, we have some information about those programs as we're moving those forward. Uh, working through the job training, workforce development program. Also uh, working on the mental health training. Uh, this is mostly in the public safety departments. Um, we are working on the agreement for the United Way Poverty Zar. Have a meeting with uh, Belvedorsy and Ben Moser uh, in the next two weeks as we're putting that agreement together. Family Connection is moving forward uh, with developing their program for um, the community assistance programs. Public Safety, again, these are all under development. RFPs are being developed, uh, Mobile Command Vehicle. Uh, they're putting the specs together for that. Uh, the IBIS system for the Police Department and the ambulances, all of those purchases are moving forward. Uh, facility improvements uh, for the HVAC system, Civic Center, Trade Center and Liberty Theater. Those are quotes are being uh, gathered and so those will be going back to council on an agenda for approval. We are looking at potential land acquisition to expand cemetery space. Uh, revenue recovery funds, uh, how those will be utilized. Again, those are all moving forward. Uh, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin did provide a camera program update, so you know where we're at with that. That those are moving forward as well. And I will turn it over to Director Rob Scott. Didn't see him come in.
We have a Council Tucker wanted to speak.
Um, yes, I I actually had a few community meetings um, this past weekend. And one of the concerns from the citizens is that the first phase, we did a a community meeting and allowed them to voice their concerns about which projects. Um, you know, you have people like Renzel Buckner and Miss Gladys Ford that really look at the numbers. And based on the seven, eight point five million dollars that we did receive. Um, it looks like we've spent probably between twenty percent on community, twenty percent of that. You know, roughly a little under twenty million on community-facing projects. So more than fifty percent has been on city projects based on the phase one and now the phase two. And then they didn't get an opportunity to um, actually communicate with the city on projects that they would like to see done. We didn't do a phase two meeting.
We did that, we did.
In reference to all the, the projects, okay, because they.
And and that's how we got to all those community programs, because I think it was Tracy Mosley from the Urban League. We're right here in this, you know.
Okay, so what, but what the, I guess what the observation from that meeting was that they feel like it's not enough, you know, being spent on community-facing projects. Um, I know Director Scott had initially put out, I think like ten million or eleven million for I think it was the home project, um, the affordable housing project. Um, and it was some other things, but it, just based on the conversations that, you know, we've had. Um, you know, in the community, that it just don't feel like we have put, we've put more of the funds towards city projects and not community projects.
Yeah, well, a- and and so we, we did have the two, three meetings, I believe, on that second round, just like we did the first. And and of course, we presented the list to the council before we had those community meetings. And we told you we were gonna go and have the community meetings and the list could change. And when we had the three community meetings, that's when we grouped all of that, the community and how much have we spent? Uh, twelve, thirteen million, whatever it is. And we came back to you and it changed based on those meetings, and then council approved that list for us to move forward. So that was that process.
Well, and.
But I hear you.
Yeah, and I'm listening and I'm sure you all are listening and, you know, see the comments and, you know, we have people, you know, here kind of concerned about, you know, the ARPA dollars. And when we're talking about grant dollars that we don't have to pay back, it would be good for us to do more projects that are community-facing. And and not so much that city-facing, because, you know, we have city, city dollars.
Yeah, well, but I I will say again, and and I I hear the concern, but the list that we are presenting to you is a city of council-approved list based on those meetings and bringing them back to you and categorizing, and then you voted on it. And so now it's just implementing.
And it started off, and I remember, because I think Mr. Scott had something. And I I can't remember the exact figures, but it was like eleven million dollars that was presented initially for, I think, an affordable housing pro- project. And then we had wanted to do some homeowner occupied projects as well. I do like that, you know, we're focusing on the qualified census tracts. Um, and I do understand what qualified census tracts mean, meaning that it's a limited amount of locations. But you have low-income individuals, especially senior citizens, that own their home um, all throughout of Colum- Columbus, Georgia. Um, and they can't afford to put a roof or a HVAC system and they, they have window units. But they're not going to be able to qualify for this if we don't ex- expand it. And I know Mr. Scott is gonna talk about that, but I'm just asking for us to, you know, really look at community-facing projects with the second half of the allocations, because I do know things can be changed. Even though we, we, we approve, but we haven't approved, because you'll bring back each project one by one for us to actually approve that allocation. So things can change prior to us actually going forward.
Well, y- y- they can, certainly, you can, council can change anything with six votes. But what we did after council approved the list and the categories. We've gone out and shared that with the awardee. And they are working and preparing and to move everything forward, because I've told them, we gotta spend this money. So they have been granted an award based on council approval. And then the details of Rob Scott's program, the twelve million or whatever we're spending. You know, he's gonna bring back details about, you know, ten thousand dollars for owner occupied. You can do roofs and you can do, that's the piece that we're gonna be bringing back to you.
He's coming right now.
Yeah, but the other funding for the various categories. Those organizations, people have been notified based on council approving.
When you say organizations, are you talking about like United Way in reference to the um, the poverty?
Yeah, we've talked, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about some of the things that are city-facing projects, that we probably gonna have to allocate those funds. The s- the city allocations of funds, once we go through to see what we, you know, put down for what we are gonna allocate the funds for city. Because it's some city, it's some city things in here.
And show you what, can you put the list up there that what we brought to council and they approved and what those allocation?
This is the list that we've brought forward.
That's what was approved.
So these are all the items, and so each, if if it's a department that's managing that program, they're working on the specifics. So like the first four is what you're gonna hear from Director Scott about the specifics of those programs. Um, and so these were all submissions from departments, and so they're working. And then same thing with this, uh, the Mobile Command Vehicle Gun Buyback Program for Police Department, ambulances. Those are all in the works.
Yeah.
Uh, the Judicial Backlog Program, that's in the works. Um, we talked about the public defender. Um, not being funded through the state ARP, and so there was some need for public defenders to um, offset what the state did on their ARP program for the Judicial Center. Uh, the facility improvements for the Civic Center, HVAC Trade Center and Liberty Theater. They're working with the vendors to get those all in place. Uh, revenue recovery.
And so, yeah. Pardon?
I said that.
Well, and and so CCGTV, they are engaged in cybersecurity, family connect, they all.
Public Safety Capital, some of that's already been approved by council.
Based on council approval, we moved forward with what you approved. And these people are working, trying to pull all of this together so that we can spend this money within the timeframe.
So what has, out of this ten million, what, what have we actually approved and what still needs to be approved? Because I don't think some of the items have been actually brought up um, for approval.
No, no, we use this as with your direction to go to CCGTV and say, you know, go out and.
I'm fine with a CCGTV, I'm just saying in reference to um.
So what do you not want to fund that you already approved?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at like with, with the Public Safety Capital, the seven point six one five. Because we have OLOS money. I'm, I'm just trying to see what's the best, because the main thing is with these ARPA grants, is that it's so um, it's the least restrictive amount of money. If we already have allocations of funds from OLOS to spend on pursuit vehicles and fire apparatuses and things like that, why don't we use OLOS? Or or whatever allocation. And then we have T, um, SLOSS money as well that we have allocations of funds for um, public safety and some things as well. So I'm just making sure that we, this unrestricted money, that we are able to use it, you know, in in the most effective way for the citizens of Columbus.
Just, yeah, but we have OLOS money, but we could spend it all tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not just OLOS, but SLOSS too. We have some SLOSS projects in reference to public safety.
Yeah, on the pay-as-you-go, when, when that money is available through pay-as-you-go. We will spend it all and still need some more money. We will need more money.
SLOSS money has been dedicated to specific.
Yes, but we have, we have vehicles on SLOSS. Um, if we pull up, up the SLOSS amount, we'll see some of these same things that we're requesting in ARPA dollars. But ARPA dollars, really, the reason why we received these dollars was because of the pandemic and it was due to the citizens. And if we're not spending that money based on citizens and we're using se- eighty percent of the funds for city-facing things, I don't feel good about that.
Well, Mayor, you all just tell us what you want us to do. And we'll do that.
Well, perhaps a little bit, maybe a little bit more detailed at another time. Detailed run-through on what the, what is in these categories?
But but trust me, when we bring it to you, I will spend every dollar. Uh, we've got, I saw the sheriff's office riding around in some Crown Vics that were today. You know, we could spend every dime and still need more vehicles.
And the fire apparatus that got such a workout during COVID, when they were running two and three times the normal hours. And they, they're, they were to a point a- at one time where they were unable to provide services. They were having to serve different areas from, from one station instead of, you know, three or four. So it's, there's a reason they're up there, but but it wouldn't hurt to go through and make sure that the public knows. Because those items that are listed, I think they are in fact filling a void that the public would be impacted by.
And the only reason why I'm saying is because we started off at eleven million for affordable housing. And we know that we are twenty thousand units, you know, short of affordable housing, um, and workforce housing here. And if we dropped it from eleven million dollars, now we're at four million dollars. I'm, I'm just looking at what we did talk about and what we did submit and how that didn't really go forward. And we have pocket buckets of money that we can pull from and we just need to make sure that we're leveraging these dollars. You know, effectively, and that's all. And that's what's being said, not just here in Muskogee, Columbus, Georgia, but it's being said you know, all over the whole United States in reference to these ARPA dollars, is using them in an effective way.
Yeah, and and I believe we are, and we may have buckets of money. But you know, I I am telling you, if you, if we look at just the vehicles that need to be replaced today, we can't afford to replace them. That's why I say when, you know, we say we got OLOS money and we, I mean, we, we're gonna spend all, when we spend that money. We're gonna, we're gonna be looking for the ways to fund things. We just don't have the money. And so, but we can, you tell us, we can change anything, you tell us, you know. I don't recommend it, but you, you know, you guys, you're the legislators.
Okay, so Director Scott will go through those programs and talk about the details of those programs.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Hodge. I'm Rob Scott, Director of Community Reinvestment. I'm gonna talk to you tonight about some of the ARP projects that we have been working to develop, that we're ready to uh, ta- introduce to you today. Um, the very first thing that I want to keep in mind is that the work that this funding is intended to um, to the population, excuse me. Preferences given to those who live in qualified census tracts, or what we call QCTs. Um, although the QCTs you see here are listed, um, it does, you don't have to live in a QCT to be a part of um, any of the implementations that I'm going to discuss today. Uh, the very first thing that I'm going to talk to you tonight about is utility assistance. Um, this program um, is intending to temporarily alleviate the cost burden associated with you, rising utility costs, um, especially as we approach the summer months. Um, the budget is roughly one point five million dollars, with one point four million dollars being attributed to direct client benefit. Um, and the other hundred thousand for administration. Um, one of the partners that we're looking at and that have been, been in in some negotiations with uh, is Enrichment Services. Uh, and they administer a light heat program, um, which brings energy assistance to um, lower-income households um, for both electric and gas. Uh, all right, so with the additional ARP funds and potential partnership with enrichment services. It will allow us to expand assistance to cover not just only electric and gas, but water as well for all of our residents. Um, they receive roughly a million dollars each year in light heat funding, with half of that appropriation being designated for our community. Um, but partnering with them in this way will allow us to expand the program by little, close to three hundred percent. Um, giving us an opportunity to serve more than six thousand households across the region. Um, their current income threshold is based off of a state um, median income level of sixty percent. Um, the infusion of the ARP dollars into this program will allow that program to uh, expand to those who are eighty percent of the uh, state median income. And what that will look like, if you look at the household for a household of four, it's roughly fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, this funding will allow us to span that, expand that program to serve those who are just under seventy-one thousand dollars. So it's almost an eighteen thousand dollar increase, um, and those who be, who are considered to be eligible for the funding. Um, the timeline looks like the. Um, the timeline looks like this. Uh, we're currently working on creating marketing material, um, program overviews, written agreements. Um, we expect to come back to you next month at the next council meeting uh, for approval to implement the program and to partner with enrichment services. Um, and during that time, we're also gonna market the program. Um, the applications are intended to be opened on May first of twenty twenty three. Um, and we expect it to be expanded rather quickly, possibly before the end of, uh, July. Um, but we left ourselves a little room and said December thirty first, twenty twenty three. The next project that I'm going to talk to you about is homeowner occupy rehab. Um, this program is being developed as a response to a crisis in our community. As we know, the city of Columbus has an aged affordable housing stock. Um, and so this particular funding source will allow us the opportunity to help preserve the housing affordability um, of those, uh, people that could benefit from this program. Um, the current budget, this, excuse this slide, um, we have ARP program coordinator slated for roughly a hundred and fifty K along with a certified inspector. The program expenses are roughly two point five. I apologize that they say two point two, but it is two point five. Um, the, some of the example of the repairs for the homeowner occupy rehold pro- program include roofs, critical systems, doors, windows, electrical, plumbing, uh, and ADA accessibility upgrades. Um, this one will be based off of the eighty percent of the state median income thresholds that were utilized during the utility assistance program design um, to allow those who, um, uh, who probably couldn't be uh, served under fun, other funding sources to be served under this funding source. Um, the timeline looks similar. It's, uh, March to April, the, um, of this, rest of this month, next month. I'm gonna finalize the program and we expect to hire an ARP program coordinator. During the month of June, we're gonna con, uh, create marketing materials and issue RFQs to select the qualified contractors who will work on these homes. Um, in the month of July, we expect to finalize the list of the qualified contractors, including our certified inspector. And roughly early fall, we expect to open the applications. In terms of the affordable housing, uh, project that we are working, this program is intending to develop solutions um, for those who need affordable housing by taking a blended approach. Um, we have a development fee of roughly two point seven and a developer fee of roughly three hundred K, which will round out the three million that we uh, allocated towards this opportunity. Um, this program is this, this, excuse me, this project is designed to produce affordable housing units, particularly for those with lower incomes. And some of the options that my staff and I have been entertaining, um, our rental housing development as well as homeownership. Um, with the implementation of the ARP funds into a developing capital stack, uh, the city will be able to continue to work through partners to provide additional affordable housing units to our residents. Uh, to accomplish this pro- particular project, we are going, are going to, uh, issue RFPs um, to developers, both, um, for profit and nonprofit developers. Um, and some of the questions could include, will the new units have income restrictions and or set asides? Um, or does the project, proposed project include a layering of funding sources to better disperse the incurred burden of development costs? Um, the timeline was early April or the April twenty twenty three of this year. Um, we wanna approve the implementation and create the RP to be able to allow those developers the opportunity to compete for the funding. Um, at the end of June of twenty twenty three, we expect to approve a project or some projects. Um, in July first of twenty twenty three, we expect to develop and execute our written agreements with those that we have recommended and have been approving. And we expect to expend the fa- funding by June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or comments about anything that I've stated to you today?
Uh, yeah, there are. Hold on a second, Rob. Counselor Huff?
I appreciate you, Director Scott. Um, application you said was started in August, uh, for the, uh, rehab?
Expected to start.
Expected to start in August.
This is a developing program, so.
Okay.
You know, we have needed a little bit.
Once you get it ready to go, uh, where would they find the applications?
Uh, I do not have that information for you as this is a developing program, but as we introduce the program to the community, we will be certain to come back and talk to everyone about it.
I just wanna get a head start. Thank you. Well, and 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 again, I've challenged them to spend this money because we don't wanna be faced with clawbacks. You know, and because we just, I mean, you hurt what we're dealing with with the state.
Yeah.
And so we gotta get this money and move in.
We had this one lady for three, four years now. She has window situation, rooftop.
So we'll be coming back soon.
Okay.
Because we we gotta, we gotta move.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Director Scott, are you planning on using a developer or several developers possibly when it comes to the affordable housing?
Well, that that just depends, you know, um. I think it would be in the city's best interest to entertain all of us. Um, the ones that I think will be the ones that we will most likely want to entertain are those who have a well-developed capital stack. Meaning that if we can get one or two, um, different developers who already have funding in place to set aside for the particular project, then I think that would be in our best interest, but I can't say that right now because I haven't developed it enough yet.
Are you gonna reach out to several entities out there that are already involved in the community doing these kind of projects?
Absolutely, and we will work with Deputy City Manager Hodge and the City Manager's Office to develop that.
Well, and and let me just say this, a lot of, we we use that term affordable housing, but to so many people, that that word is broad. You know, what is truly affordable housing? And sometimes the ones that really need it, you know, get left out because the term creates a whole different category. So there are creative projects around the country. We're starting to see little communities, so to speak. Quote, tiny homes, things like that, that it's at a whole nother level than what a lot of people might have termed affordable housing. But people need it. And some people can't afford affordable housing in some people's uh, terms of what the definition means. So, you know, I'm hoping that we look at that broadly to be able to reach all those in our community that might need a little help and assistance when it comes to affordable housing.
Absolutely.
I guess all the questions.
You have anything else? So, and and Mayor, and Council Tucker, I want you to know I hear you, you know, and so. But whatever, however you all want to, but but we we have, I've had them staff meeting with organizations, agencies that we, through that list, to challenge them to bring, to to move this. And so they already, based on having gotten these organizations approved through council, they've been, we've communicated with them and they're they're working. And so I just want you to know where they are. Um, but we're gonna keep moving it forward because we gotta spend this money. Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Ma- Mayor, are there any other questions about ARP?
Oh, yeah, Counselor Tucker.
Yeah, the the main thing is I just wanted to look at the with what we have allocated for the sploß, because we did have some, you know, funds. And I can't remember if it was what the actual amount was for public safety, but it was like the second highest under, I think, partisan rate, which partisan rate normally don't get as high.
Yeah.
But they did this time. So I just wanted us to look and see if we had, um, not doing like duplication of efforts um, in reference to the, um, the sploß allocations that we already have set forth. And if we could move those allocation, um, and just like Counselor, um, Davis was talking about in reference to what is affordable housing and different projects and I know, um, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge probably is tired of me and Counselor Davis talking about tiny homes. Um, I know it's almost like a taboo word, but it's taboo. But, um, just just trying to make sure that we, you know, actually put a good amount of, um, funding towards affordable housing, you know, if we can, if we can pull from that because we already have this allocated, you know, through the sploß, to to use those dollars to put towards, you know, more of affordable housing, um, or really more of affordable housing, because we really, that, we just had a call. Um, I think we united way this week in reference to, um, affordable housing and some some projects that they're working on with land trust and, you know, some other different things. But we just really have to address this affordable housing issue, um, here in Columbus.
And and just to comment on the public safety in the sploß, you know, some of that funding was for replacement of fire stations. And then, uh, the rest was a capital for public safety and it's averaging about seven hundred thousand a year because it is pay as you go for police, fire and sheriff's office. So obviously for the fire department, seven hundred thousand, they have to kind of put two years together just to buy one fire engine. So we are looking at the OLOS, the sploß, you know, this funding source, um, to try to make our capital for public safety in a good position, but I I understand what you're saying and we can come back and and really lay out all of that.
Do you think we'll have any of those in the upcoming budget as well, in the budget cycle? Do you all like foresee any, um, things for like public safety in reference to vehicles or things like that in this budget cycle?
I don't really know.
Well, I know something will be there, I just don't know, you know. Because you you got to, like I said, I I think it was today or yesterday, today, I, you know, we we've got some vehicles on the street that shouldn't be on the street. I I saw, I hate to say it, I know, I saw the sheriff there, but I I saw one of his vehicles today. I'm like, that thing need to get off the street. You know? And they're in the police department as well.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, I want to add another note real quick to the conversation on affordable housing. You know, I would hope, considering in the RFP, that you would also look at creative ways. There are some possibilities here to leverage funds. I believe a great way to leverage funds, uh, and there's people out there that are already doing it. You know, one example, North Highlands, there's a lot of creative activity going on there. You could leverage these funds with the private sector funds or, uh, uh, funds out there that that through the the, uh, uh, these foundations, et cetera, that they may be willing to to, uh, do some matching and and, you know, you wind up, this money winds up being able, you you can accomplish a lot more with less dollars and, uh, we may want to consider some of those options as well.
Sure.
That's alright, that's alright. Counselor Tucker?
And I say I gotta piggyback, but, um, that's exactly what Macon did with the first round of ARPA dollars. They, um, put four million in their community foundation, put four million um, to leverage those dollars. And that's that's really what it is, just leverage the money. This is like probably a once in a lifetime opportunity for us to have these type of dollars come within our city. And we just wanna make sure we leverage them and use them in the most effective way.
Sure. Mayor, if there are no other questions, we're gonna move to, uh, the renaming of Fort Benin.
Do the update on Fifth Avenue?
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
So just, uh, to come back and provide an update on nine thirty one Fifth Avenue. Uh, that was on the demolition list, um, and was approved by council on January twenty fourth. Council did authorize a sixty day extension, which ended March twenty fifth. Um, part of the requirement, as was sent in the letter, uh, was for if the owner wanted to, um, extend that time, the requirements were to, um, get a contractor, provide us a copy of the contract and financial statements showing the funds. Again, this is a demolition, not a property maintenance case, so it would need to be brought up to code, not just, this isn't, um, a structure that just needs a new roof. This is a structure that the director has determined to be unsafe. And so it needs to be brought up to code. And right now, the only thing that has happened is we've had a contractor pull a permit. Uh, we don't have a contract that shows what the work that's gonna be done or the financial statements to provide uh, the finances behind that. So at this point, it has not met the requirements of what we would typically expect, um, when council makes a decision to allow us to work with the owner. Um, and so at this point, I just, uh, come back with an update that we are not where we need to be in order to preserve this particular structure based on how we handle demolitions.
Counselor Kogle?
Um, can you, uh, Chris, can you pull up the pictures that I gave you? I I drove by, um, the structure and hopefully the house, can you, um, can you provide me with like what the requirements are for demo? Just because if, from the naked eye, um, I can think of about a hundred other structures that are, uh, about a hundred other structures that we could better spend our, um, money on. And and this is, um, this is the structure.
So I think what you can't see from the picture, i- and my understanding is there's a floor and a, and a roof, there's no interior. So this is a two-story house, has no floor in the middle. And I am not the building official, and so I I don't wanna answer for the director of inspection and codes, who is the building official. Uh, but this has been under a demolition case probably since twenty seventeen. So it has been going on for a long time. And no improvements to the structure has been made over that period of time. And it has been determined by the, uh, building official that it is an unsafe structure. As part of the demolition process, what, as opposed to a property maintenance case, when they determine that it would take more than fifty percent of the value to bring this structure up to code and to make it safe, then it falls under the demolition process. As opposed to a property maintenance case where they go out and there's some minor, um, problems with the structure, but is structurally sound. Um, then it goes through property maintenance and we say you need to fix this, that and the other, but it's basically structurally sound. This property is not one of those. It's been determined by the building official to not be structurally sound. Um, and so we would not, um, support moving forward as if it's a property maintenance case.
So does that, um, just, I I'm I'm just curious, like, uh, when we, when we go around looking at structures that potentially could go onto our demo list, we're walking through all the structures? Through, uh, I mean, rather than looking at the exterior, I'm just, I'm just curious on what the yeah, what the criteria is for, you know, I know that one is to have a roof and, um, the windows are boarded up. I'm just curious how often we walk through structures that are owned by other property owners.
Mayor, I I know, our certified building official, who's Ryan Proveit, is not here tonight. He's he he's out this week. Um, and I know that we've gone through before your time, but we could come back and and do it again. Or we can have Ryan to just get with you. Either way, it's your preference, but we can certainly do another session here at council. Because the public perhaps need to know.
Right, because I mean, from the night, from the naked eye, that is, that is, I can think of a hundred other structures that should be torn down before this structure should even be.
He's, I, you know, I I, he's the certified building official and we, that's who we listen to.
I mean, I would, I would like to hear from, uh, I mean, I would like to hear from from Ryan if if we can, yeah, with the criteria.
Yeah, well, I'll I'll have them come back and and do that, but in the case of this structure, I mean, it's been voted on and and we are consistent. And we are following the precedent that we have always had. And so from a staff standpoint, um, we're treating this one no differently. But if council wants to, you know, whatever.
I mean, are are we, I I mean, from my, and I, I, this is, I'm just, um, I'm just putting this out there, but are are we, when are we, when we ask for requirements, are we changing those requirements as or adding to those requirements as time goes on?
I don't understand the question, but.
Yeah, or the, yeah, I mean, I I'm just looking at a, at an email from from the owner of, um, that she received some more requirements. That she received some more requirements from an email that she sent, um and those requirements sometimes just change.
Oh, no, all I could tell you is they document everything, they are consistent and they they've been. I mean, this is not new to them, but this is what they do and, you know, I mean, and. I mean, I don't know. How to explain it to you, it's, they're consistent. And and whatever, if you make a change here, then you've not treated those cases before this one. And then this will be a new standard that then we need to adjust the standard going forward.
But can I make a motion to delay until we can hear from Ryan then?
It's up to council, we want to be consistent and stay consistent as staff, and I've told them that. Council can do whatever they like and that will be.
I mean, I. Yeah, I'm, but it'll just stay on the agenda. What what is the timeline?
I don't, do you know?
So we um, I believe there were seven structures that were on that, so they have not got to this one yet. Um and so there there's still, I think, four others in front of this one, which will not happen before the next council meeting.
Uh can I just make a motion to pull that off the demo list for now?
Alright, there's a motion in a second, and I will say that. Just from the perspective of, again, setting the precedent, I think the council has always taken a pretty consistent line when it when it deals with. Properties are on demolition list, cause it has already gone through the process, it's been vetted, it's had hearings, it's reached out to people. And and I'm not talking about this particular one, I'm just saying in general. We've always kind of figured too that if it stays up another six months, the neighborhood is dealing with that. We don't have to deal with it except when we see it on on the the screen, so anyway, Counselor House.
Thank you, Mayor, this is to the motion, I I don't think we ought to take it off the demo list. Uh we're not gonna knock it down in the next two weeks anyway, I think we need to have Ryan come back and and and. Yeah, I think so, I think so.
We can guarantee that it won't be knocked down.
Yeah, but I don't think you want to take it off the demo list, cause that gets back to what the mayor and the city manager have talked about. Uh but I I do think it's fair to ask Ryan to come back to talk to us about that, so we understand why it's structurally unsound. And and what all, where are we all in the process before he knocks it down, so that'd be in two weeks, I guess he'll be back by then.
That's fair.
Okay. Uh Mayor Protem?
Well, I'd echo Counselor House's comments, I'd, I would hate to deter from what we have always done. And I mean, we're, we would be setting another precedent and if somebody else is gonna come in and ask for the same consideration. And I I think giving them, moving it to, waiting till the next two weeks, that gives the owner time to try to get some things going in light of our conversation tonight. So I I would, I would not support, I would just, just.
Of what, no?
Yeah, they they show the photos with every, I think, anytime they put it up.
There, when when the demolition was on the agenda, for every structure, you see the photos.
And there's a lot of supporting documentation too that's in the packet that talks about how long they've been working on it. It's.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
So what, what, tell me what we're doing, Mayor.
Well, there was a motion in a second and we didn't call the. You want to withdraw the motion? Alright, we'll just administratively. Okay, alright.
So what do we say now?
He'll be back at the next meeting to kind of update, provide some pictures, maybe pull the old packet.
So we can put this back on on the agenda for an update, yeah.
It it it's stay on the agenda, but it stays on the demolition list.
Okay, sure. Okay, anything else on that, Mayor? Okay, so we'll talk about renaming Fort Benning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know y'all are tired. Uh this shouldn't take very long, this is um. Little update on the change uh going from Fort Benning to Fort Moore that will occur on May eleventh officially. As you know, Fort Benning was established in October of nineteen eighteen, is Camp Benning. Uh it was basic training for World War One, uh it moved to its current site in nineteen twenty.
Right there. Been down in what county you come from? Been going too long.
Tobit, Marion and Muskobe, they're kind of all marries together. Anyway, it's a, it became a permanent military base in nineteen twenty where it moved to its current spot. It has grown tremendously uh throughout the years due to the numerous conflicts from. Uh World War Two to the war on terror lately and of course our. Uh former Cold War and our current Cold War as they're going along right now. And in two thousand five BRAC, of course, we picked up the armor school to go along with the infantry school. For our um Maneuver Center of Excellence. In uh August of twenty twenty-two, the congressionally mandated naming commission recommended that Benning be renamed to Fort Moore. The renaming is is in honor of uh late General Howe Moore and uh his wife Julia. Um and ma- again, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three is the official day of transference and there will be uh quite the events going on on post. The naming commission was established in the Congress in twenty twenty-one. It was mandated by the Thornbury National Defense Authorization Act for FY twenty-one. It focused on renaming military assets with names associated with the Confederacy. Renaming Fort Bidding to Fort Moore was chosen after review of several name changes, several name change submittals. In January of twenty twenty-three, the DOD ordered full implementation um of these. And of course, I'm sure uh mainly because the movie was filmed here and the book was written in Auburn. Um that y'all are all familiar with uh General Moore. Uh he graduated from West Point in nineteen forty-five, did occupation duty in Japan uh following World War Two. Uh served in Korea, served with NATO and of course. Uh if you know the story of the Idrang Valley, he took his men in there and what was one of the uh worst early battles of the war. And got most of them out. His wife Julia, or Julie is, I don't know if I got Julie in here anywhere, but uh that's what he called her. The Pentagon used to uh notify families of uh lost soldiers by a taxi cab. Um a lot of probably old taxi cab drivers here in Columbus that are retired today probably had that duty at one point. Uh she and other officers' wives got together and uh. Took that responsibility away from the taxi cabs and did it themselves. Uh because of her work, uh the new Pentagon policy going forward was to notify families um with a. Uh chaplain and an officer and no more, no more taxi cabs. So potential impacts on Columbus, um the naming commission in January advised local governments to look at their following recommendations. And initiate name changes to local streets and local assets named after the Confederacy. However, this is not a mandate. But obviously being where we are, we do have conflicts. Uh there are two main interests on the post, Fort Benning Road and I one eighty-five. Um as you can see, our assistant director Vance Beck, uh engineering director Vance Beck got in that bucket truck and he took down. Benning already, cause we weren't really sure what the letters were made of. Um so that was removed two weeks ago, two weeks ago. Um and we'll get into a little more detail on that, but I just wanted to show y'all that um the Benning part is down. Alright, there's several others in the immediate area that reflect names of the Confederacy. Uh please keep in mind, there may be a street or two that we can verify is honoring the Confederacy, for instance, Hood Street over in East Winton. None of the other street names fit the Confederacy, so we don't think it's can, a Confederate name. Um non Confederate would be Forest Road, which is named after Dr. Forrest Crosby. And of course, uh Mayor Jackson with Jackson Road and Jackson Avenue down in the industrial, Blanchard Industrial Park. Um we're also reviewing the need to review other CCG entities such as Benning Park, which is behind Frank Chester. Uh Rec Center and the Follow Me Trail Signs um that cross Fort Benning Road. And there you can see them and they are engraved unlike the um, unlike the ones over the interstate. And they're are, and they're on both sides, so uh they're double sided, so that's two of them that we would have to replace. Here's some others um that we have, most you will find are located in Benning Hills. Half the streets in Benning Hills are named after World War Two generals, the other half are named after Confederate generals. Here's easy for uh Stewart, Ja- uh Stonewall Jackson, uh Robert E. Lee, so those are all mostly in the Benning Hills neighborhood. Now the impact to citizens, um each business or homeowner has to give their concurrence uh to have each street name changed. That is not easy for all any of y'all that were here when Fourth Avenue became Veterans Parkway. I'm sure Counselor Allen shaking his head, um it will require time and effort by the city to contact each owner and get their concurrence. Um and then the owners will have to bear the financial and personal time burdens of notifying friends, family, businesses, updating their business information, their legal information, and. Address, things of that nature. We also have to coordinate with our GIS department, the GIS departments of uh private companies. Um and GPS sites such as Google Maps, MapQuest and Waze. Uh other impacts to citizens, all all of our maps will have to be updated, as will any again with private business. Business litterheads, licenses, external signage, uh if they have their address on it, will have to be updated. And of course, we will have to work hand in hand with all utilities, public safety and the postal service uh regarding address changes. Now where we are now, um as I mentioned, the gateway project over I one eighty-five, Benning has been removed. There is no, there is no idea about cost replacement um due to, we got it, we'd have to pay for traffic control. Pressure washing, there may be environmental procedures we have to deal with because this is dealing with federal highway. That ties into cleaning as well, we have already gotten one pa- uh pressure wash quote. And I'll leave it at six figures and it was more than that. Um we've got to replicate the letters, we've got to have the ma- manpower because the letters that we're replicating are um. Thirty pounds, they're cast bronze and they're over two feet long. Now, we have found the um, the vendor who did it back in twenty eleven? Yeah, so we've found the vendor, they're looking through to see if they can replicate. If they can, we will just buy the five letters for more. If they can't, we'll buy Fort Moore, we'll buy whatever we need to match it up. Um the feds have given us no allocated funding. Of course, that's a good thing that it's not a mandate or we would be in a spot. Um and we've got to think about new names if we decide to name some of these to the interior of Columbus, such as the ones in Benning Hills. Um we've got to get, we're, we've already talked with GDOT about directional signage such as um. Where, you know, you got a sign that says Mercer Medical School, turn here or Fort Benning, turn here. Directional signage shouldn't be much of an expense. Um we are coordinating with Fort Benning, they actually reached out to us this morning on some questions they had about this ongoing effort. So we are in good contact with him. And then I don't know how soon we want to move on this, but we will be looking for council. Direction on how to deal with these local streets and how to deal with CCG facilities such as the Follow Me Trail Signs in Benning Park. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Counselor Huff?
Thank you, sir, um I'm really interested in the main road of Fort Benning Road going into Fort Moore. Could that be changed to Moore Drive or Road, whatever it is?
It would, without having any conflict, we could do Fort Moore Road. We have a Moore Road, but.
Okay, well, Fort Moore, yeah, that's fine.
That's, but that's when, when we have uh words like that that are used elsewhere. We get with public safety and GIS on that to see if it messes up anything, so they're not sending public safety to the wrong street. So we would work with them there.
Cause for all the people coming here for graduations and things every week, if they get lost. That road will take them straight into where they're going trying to get to graduation.
Right, I would say our first priority is directional signs and the gateway. Fort Benning Road is going to be a process, if it is indeed changed, a long process, cause we're dealing with housing. We're dealing with businesses, um you know, the Housing Authority has three large developments along Fort Benning Road. So I mean, there's a, there's a lot of interest there that probably gonna get some pushback. Just from tradition and from the headache of having to do it.
How will the meetings be held?
I'm sorry?
How will we hold our meetings?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but we would, we would hold public meetings out there.
Okay, okay, would that include the other smaller strip? You have uh Fort Benning and then you have Benning.
I think, uh well, Benning Drive, um. That's the one where it gets a little tricky because it doesn't have the word Ford in it.
Right.
Um as it goes by Frank Chester, that's one we've got on the list and we would look at, but to us, it's not as important.
Right.
As Fort Benning Road.
Right, agreed, okay, thank you.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Johnson, I understand, um I have been told that the road um on Fort Benning. From the entrance sign at Fort Benning Road, down by the Infantry Museum and you know where I'm talking about. That road is gonna be named Legacy Drive, have you, is that?
That is a different project, that is a road that is right now called Military Drive. That is intended to cut through the middle of the um uh museum's property. And that is probably FY twenty-eight before we'll see any action there as far as construction. It'll run parallel to Fort Benning Road.
But through the, through the Infantry Museum property?
It'll, it'll go, right now.
The Infantry Museum property right now, their address is seven, uh seventeen seventy-five Legacy Way.
Right.
And I've been told that the road that you take from Fort Benning Road and you go past the entrance uh sign. That that road is, that goes on to the post will be Legacy Drive.
That's, if that's on post, that's.
Okay, okay, let me ask you this, uh I know that there are a number of um road signs that are um on state property. For example, on JR Allen Parkway and on one eighty-five, it says Fort Benning this way. Those, will those be under the um uh auspices of the state? To, not only to change them, but to pay for them and all of that kind of stuff?
And they're doing that now, so we're already in conversation with them. They're already upgrading JR Allen, for instance, uh with signage now, so.
That says Fort Moore?
Well, they're, they're upgrading their signage, um if you've noticed out there, um they're putting in all new stuff. And so the new stuff would have.
Ultimately will say Fort Moore.
Yes.
So we are, we, we would be responsible for those city. So we are, we, we would be responsible for those city streets that uh, have the, the Benning designation, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
But not for the state roads?
It, it, yeah, again, it's if, if we choose because it's not mandated. But the directional signage will have to be.
Yes.
But, I mean, but we, we would make the decision on whether or not we change a local, a city street name. And, but the state has all of those state roads.
On, on Victory Drive's the state road, they will have to change directional signage there. They, they will have to change directional signage on these-
At their expense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they're going to have to do it at Gordon and Stewart as well.
Yeah, yeah. Have we um, have we considered um, having some um, community meetings to talk about what, what, if anything, we want to do as we change these names? Um, I, I know that there are a lot of people in our community who are not, uh, they were not in favor of changing the name of Fort Benning. And so I would imagine that those same people would not be in favor of changing Fort Benning Road. But have we, have we had some of those conversations with the citizens?
We have not yet because they just uh, named Fortmore in January.
In January, yeah.
And then they're going to make the change official May eleventh, and we've only had word here for about a month. Um, on the, we got the May eleventh here about a month ago, so-
Yeah.
And changing Fort Benning Road is going to be such a process that we're trying to get rid of the low hanging fruit first.
Right.
Then it could be Fortmore for five years before we ever get to finalize something like Fort Benning Road cha- name change.
Okay, okay. Uh, I, I, I just, I know that, that this is one of those topics that there are a lot of people who have a, a very uh, a hard uh, opinion about what we ought to do and what we ought not do. Benning Hills, you know, how do you, how do you change that subdivision name, you know?
Well, and, 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 you know, we can't make them, but that's who we would ask.
Yeah, yeah. Well, good luck there, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
You mentioned about the cleaning, I know in the past we've talked about that, I don't know what the scope of that project was. But I, you know, I watched them clean Chick-fil-A every weekend, and there's a massive amount of concrete out there. But uh, even if you just did the facade, where the name's going, I mean, I think that would go a long ways. That doesn't, I mean, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that's not a complex matter, I mean, that can be done. And certainly there's, there's equipment out there that's quite capable of doing it without having to deal with the traffic and all that kind of stuff. But anyway, I'm just throwing that out there, it's just-
Well, I mean-
Worst-case scenario, that facade part where you're putting the, putting the lettering, if that can be cleaned, you know, I think you've accomplished a lot.
We, we will look at all avenues, but again, we're all looking at it. You're still, you're still, you're over a federal highway, a state route over a federal highway, you've got to do lane closures. Um, even if it's just, you know, Country Boy Power Washing coming out there, you've still got to, um, you've still got to follow those guidelines.
You still own that, by the way?
What's that?
Country Boy Power Washing.
That's actually a business, but yeah.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I, like Counselor Thomas, have heard that Fort Benning has decided to rename Fort Benning Road from the gate on to Fort Benning. I don't remember sure what the name is, but I think they've decided. So when you're having the discussions off-post, I recommend you talk to the Garrison Command Office because a member of the Garrison Command told me that. Find out whatever name it is that they picked, because that certainly should be in the mix, or it will get that much more confusing with maps, because it's, it's going to be something other than Fort Benning Road on Fort Benning.
Well, and, and-
And that'll be May the eleventh.
He emailed us this morning, but he did not mention that. Glad you did, so we will respond-
Okay.
-to his email and answer that question, because then that kind of, that kind of puts us in a situation where we need to-
It will change May the eleventh.
Well, I, I, I've got a meeting with Brandon Cockroth tomorrow, so, you know. Yeah. Uh, Mayor, any-
Yeah, no, and I'll tell you too, I know you're meeting with Brandon, and I may horn in on that meeting because we've been in communication with General Buzzard and with uh, and with the Garrison Commander.
It, it's, it's going to be an in-person-
We want to make sure that because it's, there's heightened sensitivity with the, with Fort Benning about all this.
Yeah.
And just to make sure that everything's done, I've asked Josh, since he knows all those players, uh, to make sure that everything that happens in conjunction with Fort Benning, our office is copied.
Yeah.
So that we can make sure that we're maintaining a, a, a clean line of communication with them, so we need to make sure that happens.
Well, and, and, and that email was through the city manager, so we are following that.
Yeah, I, I sent that to them.
All right.
Um, they, they don't communicate directly with them, it's to me.
Counselor Thomas?
And if you will, um, Director Johnson, make, don't let this be the last update we get. Uh, as you're moving along, let us know, because I have people talking to me all the time about what's going on. And um, some of the questions I can answer and some of them I can't. Um, like I've been asked, is that um, is the, on one eighty-five going into the post where it said Fort Benning, is that statue, uh, or that, whatever you call it, city property? Or is that state property, or is that federal property? And who gets to make, you know, who, who has to deal with all of that? And I know that when it first went up, there were some um, business people in Columbus that, that made that happen, and I don't know-
And they maintain it.
Oh.
Yeah, the, the Gate, the Gateway-
The Gateway.
The Gateway Foundation uh, built it, uh, or put in most of the funding to build it, and they also participate in the maintenance.
And so, who does that belong to?
It should belong to us.
Belongs to the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well-
Can we give it back?
And we'll, we'll verify the ownership, but I think, I think-
I mean, you know, those are the, some of the kinds of questions that, that I'm getting, and I'm sure the other counselors are getting some of those also.
Today's March twenty-eighth and May eleventh is about six weeks away, so things are going to be moving, I'm sure, very quickly here in the next six, seven weeks.
Well, and, and as I said, please don't let this be the last one that we-
Right.
-hear from you. Let us, let us hear as it goes along. Thank you.
All right, I think that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Uh, and so the last, you got two minutes.
I promise.
On the Street Light Project.
All right, all right, all right. Good evening once again. I'm here to talk to you tonight about uh, Phase Two of the Street, uh, Street Light Project. Uh, December sixth of twenty-twenty-two, you council approved Phase One of a partnership between the city and Georgia Power for energy efficient lighting to reduce the carbon footprint. Um, and provided a little bit of remote diagnostics for proactive outage reporting and repair. Tonight I want to mention and talk to you about this Phase Two of the project, uh, this, of the smart LED lighting program. Um, we're looking at doing a residential component um, with a replacement of existing fixtures with new fixtures to improve lighting. Um, that is both ballast and bulb. Um, and some of the benefits that will come out of this will be increased vehicle and pedestrian safety. Um, a unique thing about this particular project is that um, we've worked to uh, identify CDBG funding. Um, CDBG funding serves communities where fifty-one percent of the residents are under eighty percent of HUD's area median income. And so we've identified eligible census tracts where this activity can occur. Uh, this map shows you um, the eligible areas in which we can make this type of uh, impact on the communities that uh, need it. The, uh, the process includes removing and replacing a little close to two thousand existing fixtures. And again, like I said, the benefits again are going to be enhanced vehicle and pedestrian safety. Um, the upfront costs are nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, um, which is a hundred percent CDBG funded. Uh, the monthly lighting costs will increase uh, to, uh, rough, by roughly thirty-two thousand dollars, and it'll be uh, uh, lined up with the Street Light budget. Um, thank you. That's it. It's fast enough.
Well, and, and I think the important thing to note is that, and we're doing a project on Broadway.
Yes, sir.
And um, and, and so you are going, I, I think Georgia Power came and showed you the difference in the current lighting and the new lighting. I mean, it is significantly different. And, and the thing that we're doing with the T-Sloths and all of the road projects that we're doing, we're putting in on those streets the upgraded lights, lighting that Georgia Power shows you. So all those street projects that you saw in the T-Sloths, um, as we go, we'll be getting these upgraded lights, so-
Counselor Kogle?
So are we getting, uh, the, the lighting difference is awesome. I mean, I've run on, I run on the Riverwalk, it's drastically different, so it's, it's great. Um, is the, the thirty-two thousand dollar increase because we're getting more lights? Because aren't LED lights supposed to be more efficient?
Yeah, they are supposed to be more efficient, and I know Pam, they've talked with you about- Oh, Donna's there. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, we haven't got the exact answer to that ourselves either. Um, it is a totally different fixture than what's in existence today. Well, actually, we have mixed lighting throughout the community. We have the old incandescent, which is the, the yellow orangish color scattered light versus the LED, which is a, a brighter, whiter, cooler light. And LEDs are supposed to be more efficient, but these lights do more than just the lighting.
What do they do?
Well, as he said, they're smart lights, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, and we do have a meeting, um, trying to get a meeting scheduled with Georgia Power, because we have to talk about establishing a standard for new subdivisions um, and other programs as we have to replace or add new lighting in an area, how we're going to do that and what the cost will be. So um, I'll have a better understanding of the fixtures, we're still trying to get that information. But I think if I'm understanding correctly, the goal is to have them where they self-report, like when they're out, they'll report back to Georgia Power that there's a problem at that location and give the location, and then the um, light should get repaired faster.
So is it just the increase in cost from smart? Uh, is it, is that because it's a smart light bulb?
Well, part of that is the maintenance cost.
So is, is-
Well, it's not just the energy cost, it's the maintenance cost.
And, and is that the net difference? Because you take the old out, you put the new in, and the net difference is a thirty-two thousand incre- increase? Or is that-
I think that's an incre- an added cost.
Is, yeah, is that, is that forever? I mean-
What, did you say monthly cost?
I thought LED lights lasted longer and they were more energy efficient. And so therefore, we shouldn't have as many, as much maintenance, I would think.
And we'll, we'll, we'll get you some more information on it.
Okay.
And uh, but I, I can tell you uh, too, that some other uh, cities are, have moved out ahead of us. You know, it's, I, I made them show me who else is doing it.
I mean, I, I mean, I think they're great, I just, I, and, and, I, I mean, I think it's great that other cities are doing it. I'm just curious of why it would be thirty thou- thirty thousand dollars more per month.
That was for that whole area for all of them.
Yeah, I, I'll have them to break it down and, and come back with more information.
We should be glowing from outer space for thirty-two thousand dollars a month.
I think you're right.
Right.
Uh, but, but I did, before we got into it, I, I wanted to know who else in Georgia is doing it. And they're doing it in Atlanta, and Augusta, and Savannah. And I had them show me the agreements, so I, I mean, I know that others-
Can you ask them if they're paying an extra thirty-two thousand dollars a month?
We're going to bring you back some information.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor, any other questions?
No, sir.
And, and then I want to know if that's a net difference. In other words, will we pay in twenty thousand a month for the, and then now it's thirty-two and it went up by net difference, you know? So we'll see.
We'll get that.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor, if there are no other questions, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, it's on to your agenda, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. For the Clerk's Agenda Item One, this is for information only. It's a Certificate of Need Application that was submitted by Piedmont Columbus Regional Midtown. It's for a project to upgrade and reconfigure its ICU rooms. Item Two is an official appointment form.
Ours motion and a second to approve item two, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion second, receive the minutes. Any that, anyone would like pulled or any edits? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments. We have council appointments, any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Corporate Extension Advisory Board, Mayor Pro Tem Allen is recommending Ms. Sandra Hawthorne to succeed Ms. Margaret Higdon, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and we had, uh, I think Reverend Flakes had three more minutes, uh, that he wanted to exercise his right to. And I think, um, Mike, you'll go second if that's okay, sir.
I'll try and keep this short and sweet. Thank you all so very much for allowing me to come back, Johnny Flakes, Pastor, Four Street Missionary Baptist Church, sixty-seven ninety-eight. Thank you so very much, can you hear me now? Thank you. Uh, Johnny Flakes, Four Street Missionary Baptist Church, Columbus, Georgia. Um, and sixty-seven ninety-eight, uh, Riverbrook Trace, three one nine zero four. I left off talking about the fairness and what criteria was being used to determine fairness. I think I got to two, and so I'll just finish the, the three and four. And one was providing opportunity for voice, providing opportunity for voice. And that is providing opportunity for voice for the community to give input in a, in terms of a process. You all have done that tonight. It has been shown that, that you do have that process. The question is whether it is done equally across the board when you're coming to decision-making. And then number four is being impartial in decision-making, being impartial in decision-making. These four pillars actually would actually determine whether a process, a, a procedural fairness, a procedural justice process has taken place. And so I'm just asking this counsel, if you would really go back and look at whether the process that has been used regarding Chief Blackman has been fair. That's what I'm asking. But here's the optic going forward. I'm asking you to rethink, to really rethink the process that has been taken. Because the optic is, it's been done unfairly. Whether people believe that or not, whether people come to that conclusion, my prayer is that we take in consideration the overall impact this decision is going to have on this city. Far-reaching implications, so I'm asking if you would take that in consideration. God bless you, God keep you safe.
Thanks, sir, thanks for your patience in waiting too. Mike, thank you for sticking around as well. Start with your name and address again, sorry.
Mike Powell, Pastor Asbury United Methodist Church, twenty through twelve Ellen Avenue. You know, I try to practice doing things in love. And I think that everybody in this room, and everybody that's been in this room today, loves this city. We have some different preferences, we have some different ideas. You guys have some information that we don't have, and you're trying to do what you think is the right thing. But the way this thing was done is what's created this optic that is so awful and it split this city. I don't know if you've gotten some of the phone calls that I've gotten, but this city is on a powder keg. I don't think you intended to do anything wrong, but the way it was handled to, to, to tell him to go and put, prepare this, give him thirty days. He comes in, he's more articulate than I've ever heard him being in, 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 since I've known him. Nobody said that it was not uh, doable or, or unworthy of even giving an opportunity. The city manager, uh, the city attorney said that we needed to do actuarials on it to make sure that the, the number- sure that the, the numbers line up with the budget, or it could be supported. What you guys should have done, if what he gave us was acceptable, you should have given this man the right to implement his plan, give him specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timeline-specific goals. And at the end of that period of time, reevaluate him, and if he has not met the assigned goals, then any actions you take would could be considered fair. But the way this was set up and done is why you have this optic of it not being fair, and it's not something that's just going to just go away. I, I, if you love this city like I love this city, don't tear this city up. The way you guys did it is what created this. People came here thinking, after hearing you, that you've given them thirty days to come up with a comprehensive plan that would be effective. The mayor, Counselor Allen, Counselor Barnes, Huff, several of them applauded. I think many of us were surprised. I don't know if people felt like he couldn't do it, but he articulated a great strategic plan. Let's give that man time. You guys determine specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timeline-specific goals, and at the end of that time, reevaluate him, and then I think you'll have, regain the trust of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Powell. All right, we did have a request to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation and personnel. All right, this is motion second to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, not to my knowledge, no. We, we don't typically take any votes in executive session. Any vote has to be taken outside. Well, we will. We, we have no choice but to follow the law. No, no, they didn't. And I don't, and just so you know, that, that, that was, that severance package was crafted by me to present, and, and the city attorneys to present to council. They, there was an expression to, to provide that package. So we're the ones, I'm the one that put that together at, at the last minute. Yep. Yep, right, right. Yes, sir. All right, y'all have to clear the, clear the chambers, because we're in executive session. All right, council has been in executive session, discussed potential litigation and personnel. There were no votes taken during the executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.